Good evening and welcome, everybody, to the December 12, 2016 zoning board of appeals. I'm Paul Allen, your chair. Welcome. Before we get to the order of our business on our agenda, I ask that everybody stand, face the flag, and say, "Pledge of allegiance."
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vanson, you can call the roll, please.
Anyone want to do that now?
Yes.
Jacson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
McAlpine?
Here.
Kirby?
Here.
Emmons?
Butts?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Okay, we're one member short. I'm going to turn a question over to the board for some input. We need one person to sit on our first case, actually before the first case. Yeah, I'm going to need two on the first case.
So whoever was here the last time?
Yeah.
You both should do that now.
Yeah, I think you're right. So what we're going to do is switch. Both our alternates are here, and our first case tonight was postponed from last month's meeting after arguing in a public hearing. We heard the case. So since it is postponed, it's best to have the composition of the board that was here last month for our first case. So I'm going to ask that, let's see, Mr. Who was here last month? So, Mr. Butts, you would need to be seated.
Unseated.
Unseated, rather, yes. And I ask that our alternates, Mr. Ullar and Mr. Allen, please be seated.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do we want to move the agenda and the first?
Yeah, point of order.
Yes.
Do we want to do the agenda and the approval of last month's minutes before we play the musical chairs or after?
To me, it doesn't matter. If it's preferable to the board, I don't. You want to do it before?
Should.
Okay. All right. We have an agenda. Firing any changes? I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Move and support. Any discussion? Ms. Vanson.
Smith?
Yes.
Jacson?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yeah.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Now, we have our meeting minutes presented to us for the November 14, 2016 meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or changes to the meeting minutes? Seeing and hearing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to move, Mr. Kirby?
Support.
Second, Mr. Jacson. Any discussion? Ms. Vanson.
Butts?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Jacson?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Now, we would ask that the alternates who served on our first, I am on the agenda, please approach the days, and Mr. Butts will leave because he was not here.
I won't forget that.
Okay, so ready to hear our first case, but before we do, I'd just like to present some opening remarks. We do have three variance cases before us tonight, and the order of business that we handle the variance cases goes like this. First, I'll call a case, then staff will present the case summary, and if there's any questions from the board, the board can ask Ms. Vanson. Then I'll ask the applicant to approach the podium. Please give your name and address and present your case to the board. It's not required you necessarily repeat everything you've stated in your application. You may, but it's fully acceptable simply to summarize. Once the applicant's finished, and there's no questions by the board or clarifications, I'll open the public hearing, and this is the time where any members of the public can speak on the case. Just step up to a podium. Well, raise your hand. I'll call you up. Tell us your name and address, and it's very helpful if you indicate your relationship geographically to the property in question. Maybe you're the next-door neighbor, person behind, maybe you got a postcard in the mail. It's likely to be very helpful to the board. And then state your comments. Please direct your comments to the chair, and when the public comments are over, I'll close the public hearing. Once I do close the public hearing, no other comment regarding the case will be taken unless it's a response to a question by the board. Then the board will proceed to discuss and vote on the case. Appeals to the board's decision are heard by the Oakdale County Circuit Court. Now, later in the meeting, we have also an agenda item for public comment. There will be an opportunity for anyone to comment on any other matters not related to these cases. So, Ms. Vanson, could you call our first case?
Item number one is application number VA-1016, Jason Silver, 1363 Wiltshire, parcel ID 2517257005, south side of Wiltshire, between Cass and Woodbridge, requesting a variance of Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138 zoning, Article 4, off-street parking and loading, Section 138 222, parking lot location, design, and construction for single and two-family residential usage. Residential driveway for parcels less than 100 feet wide, no more than one driveway in approach, for dwelling units shall be permitted. The applicant is requesting this variance in order to construct a circular driveway on a 97-foot wide parcel.
Thank you. Any members of the board have any questions from Ms. Vanson? And I see that our applicant is here. Serge, approach the podium. State your name and address for the record and let us know what you'd like us to know.
Jason Silver, 1363 Wiltshire. So, thank you for the ZBA to let me come in and do this again, hopefully convince you to grant my variance. So, if you recall from last month, I have a little over 97 feet frontage, and I need 100 to have the second approach.
And if I could, for the benefit of members in the audience, if it doesn't cramp your style or interfere with what you want the board to, I don't know if there's a way you can turn that. Does anybody see it?
All right. I had submitted this with my variance proposal.
Right, that's in the application package, and we have eight and a half by 11 of that, and he's pulling it up, and he's going to explain.
So, I don't know if I can do this so that everybody can see as well as the ZBA.
Sure, I understand.
So, you postponed it and wanted me to go back and look for a couple more things or some more information for you. So, I've done that, and I hope that it'll help you grant the variance. So, the first thing that I was asked to go back and look into was to see if I can get some sort of
easement.
Easement. Thank you. Easement. I'm the property owner here to see if I can go back and forth between the front and the back a bit easier. That was a resounding no, thank you. Apparently, years ago, he sort of gave away about two feet of his property and moved his fence over just so a car could pass from the front to the back. So, that's not really very much of an option. There was one thing that was pointed out at last month's meeting that I wanted to clarify. I had said that in the 1A and 1B, I was the only home that had a single driveway, and a resident stood up and said, "That's not true." I wanted to clarify that. I am the only house in 1A or 1B that does not have the ability to have a two-car wide driveway. And that is because, in talking with Ms. Vanson, trying to come up with alternatives that might allow me to have sufficient parking and access for the second approach, that, you know, one option that was floated was to put in a second wide drive here. Well, it was pointed out that I would need a variance to have a driveway in front of the house, so that's not an option. The driveways can be on the side, going to the back, but they cannot be in front of the home. So, that sort of limits what I'm able to do. And that, you know, I'm talking about the other homes that may only have a single wide approach, but they, you know, ease into a two or two and a half wide, some that only have a single, they have the ability to have a two-car wide, but I don't. So, the other option was to put some sort of driveway over on this side of the lot. Now, I know that the ZBA isn't supposed to consider cost when they're talking about whether to grant a variance or not. But I did some searching, some getting some more facts, and I don't know if any of you actually walked the property, I mean, came into the back or looked over the fence or to the fence line here. This is all relatively flat. When you get into here, this side of my lot is substantially lower in elevation to here, here, and here. To put in a driveway here that goes all the way back here to where the garage is, not only would this have to be raised to this elevation, but this area is two and a half to three feet lower than this area. Not only would I have to raise this area to this, but I would also have to raise it here. There's some question whether or not the difference in elevation here, there's enough length to be able to allow a functioning driveway. There's also some additional problems actually making the turn into the garage as it stands here. So, the options are, if I were to use this idea, I would have to raise this up a considerable amount, not just to level here, but to level here. I would also need to put in a new garage to face this direction. There's not enough room to come up here and make the full turns Alternatively, I could put in a driveway here and install a garage here, which is an alternative. It's an option. But it becomes, you know, a question of, you know, do I have any reasonable alternatives to providing enough reasonable parking? Again, remember where I'm zoned. Compared to, you know, some of the smaller lots, it's not the same. To do anything over here, I would need to either construct a new garage here or construct a new garage there. And you're talking, never mind the cost of the concrete, but the cost of a new garage. There's no real reasonable, in my opinion, alternatives. And I would like to remind the ZBA that I have 97.2 feet, talking about less than three feet. You know, is, you know, a $40,000 expense, you know, a reasonable alternative? I don't think so, but of course, it's my $40,000, so. Does, you know, last month, you know, I asked if there were any questions, and then I sat down, and then there were questions that I couldn't respond to. So.
Does anybody have any questions?
Your turn.
All through. Do any members of the board have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Smith?
Not a question, but a comment. And I want to thank you for doing the additional research there, because as we look at this, some of the things that appear to be easy options may not be. So, that certainly helps to give a fair discussion. Sir, thank you.
You bet.
My pleasure.
Mr. Kirby?
Couple of questions. Yeah. When, you know, we're looking at the circle driveway that you're proposing in front of the house.
Yes.
If we were to, when you talk about the ability to turn in the back and go into the face of the driveway, it would seem that you would have much more of a radius than you currently are proposing in the front of the house to make that cut, because that driveway would have to be further east to get by the house. So, in fact, the driveway you're proposing, the cut and the radius on that circle is much tighter than what you would do if you brought the driveway down the east side of the house and then turned to cut into the garage.
I'm not following you at all. Can I come up there and maybe you can?
Sure.
Sure.
Yes.
Explain what you're.
You see this radius right here?
Sure.
Now, imagine you were going into the garage right here. This radius would be less than this. If you were wider, it'd be more of a radius to turn in. So, what you're proposing here is a tighter radius than what your garage, so you wouldn't have to turn the garage. It would be more of a radius than what you're proposing out of front.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. Can I borrow your pen? Sure. I'm sorry. There are currently trees that come out here. So, what I would, what you would have to do is you would have to come down, go like that, go like this, and go like that. Here's where my garage door is. Even if I didn't have to, even if I didn't have to redo the driveway or the garage things and never mind the cost factor.
Yeah.
You're still talking about turning my entire backyard into a concrete driveway because I'm less than three feet.
Why isn't that what I'm proposing? Your entire backyard is quite a bit of space here. I doubt your concrete is going to be much wider than the one I have.
Well, I guess that. I understand what you're saying, but.
Does he answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Yes.
The practical difficulty is really that you have how many cars?
Well, at any given, the practical difficulty is I can currently only park two cars in my driveway here.
And how many cars do you have?
Well, I have three cars between my wife and I.
Okay.
I have five kids. We're a blended family, so they're not all with us. But here's a perfect example. This coming up weekend, we're going to have family in town for the holidays.
Mm-hmm.
And realistically, you can't get cars in and out of here easily, and I end up having to play musical cars, you know, with more than two cars.
Mm-hmm.
Now, my neighbors are able to pull up two across, sometimes two and a half across, two and three deep, but I don't have that ability.
Right.
So, this coming up weekend, I am going to have two cars, maybe three cars. Of course, remember, wheelchair is a fire lane, so I can't park in front of my house. I have my driveway, as you recall, backs up directly into Brookline, so I don't have any close space directly across the street. So, I'm going to have four, five, six cars that are either parked down here, parked down here on Brookline, and then parked here. But what's going to happen at, what is it, 2:00 AM, where we have to get off the street? There's just not space for, to get everybody's car off the street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Mr. Silver, could you talk a little bit, based on your experience there, hypothetically, if you were to build this driveway, you know, over on the east side, as some talked about, and you had to adjust the grading or, you know, kind of fill in or build up certain parts, what would that potentially do in terms of water runoff to properties next to you and around you?
Well, that's a, thank you. That's another kind of delicate sort of situation. This area has traditionally and historically been sort of the catch-all for my neighbor here, three neighbors in the back, and my neighbor on this side. If I raise this up, I don't know, quite frankly, what that's going to do. You know, is it going to keep water? You know, it may not run off from my property to theirs, but it's certainly not going to allow their water to flow down into this area where traditionally has been much lower. If you recall, last month, I had included a picture of what we had just in rain, you know, where we had three or four inches or whatever, and overnight. So, that's certainly a concern, which I don't know if I need to get another sort of variance to, you know, allow that sort of runoff or, you know, whatever. But I know that there are some berms on this side and in the back where they've sort of raised up their property to make sure that it doesn't go over and that it flows down.
Thank you.
There is one other thing. I apologize. And I remember that there was a question last month about the width. There was some concern because I had put it in there at only 10 feet, and, you know, there was concern whether that would even be enough, I guess, space. I'm not allowed to make the circular driveway any wider than 10 feet. That's a requirement by you guys. I could have 12 or 14. I'd ask for it, but I can't. There also was some concern about the circular driveway looking like a parking lot. I can certainly understand that, although, again, you know, sort of judging by some of the neighbors, again, in my zone areas, you know, where they have, you know, four, sometimes five and even six, two across, two, three deep between the garage and the street. I don't think that it would be any more or any less parking lot-ish than that.
Mr. Allen?
One of the questions that I had, when we talked about the low area in the southeastern corner, up by your house, is the grade high up there so that water naturally runs away from your house into the low area?
Yes.
Okay, so the reason that I'm asking that question is potentially if you put a driveway on that eastern side, you want to make sure that it won't push water back towards your house, change in the grade.
I'm sure that there would be some change. I don't, if I, if we're talking about having it go over to this area where I wouldn't have to construct a new garage, the grade definitely would change enough that there might be some, some impact on the house, because I would have to raise it up to here as opposed to just making this level from the front here. It's a concern.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board members for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter? If so, please raise your hand. Mr. Morris?
My name is Bob Morris. I live in Wiltshire. And I'm not in favor of this variance for many reasons. First of all, I asked to have you be provided with a handout that I prepared from the zoning Board of Appeals handbook written by the Michigan Municipal League. And I highlighted some relevant information for you. As most of you know, I served on the zoning board for 16 years until just this summer. And frankly, before that, I wasn't even aware of this handbook, but since then, I have become aware, and I think it's a really useful tool for the ZBA, and I encourage you to ask your staff to provide all the members with that handbook.
If I could, could you direct your comments towards the variance request itself and how might maybe what you want to say that relates to your, ties into your thoughts on this case?
Right. Well, these are important for this case. You know that it's important for all five standards to be met in order to grant a variance. And I'd like to point out that, hold on just a second. In this case, the applicant has many options. He's already discussed some of the options. You know that this board can't consider cost to the applicant. From listening to the applicant, it seems to me that his needs are of a personal nature rather than relating directly to the property. I don't see that there is a unique characteristic that causes the need. The east side of the lot, as you just explained, is low, but that could be filled in. It could be made higher. He can build a driveway on that side of his property. He could build a garage on that side of his property. He could add an attached garage on that side of his property. He has a wider lot than most lots in Berkeley. Most of them tend to be around 40 feet. His property is 97 feet. If he were granted this variance and was allowed to build this driveway in front of his house, which is squished to only be the width of his house, which makes it looks, to me, it's a little disproportionate to what a driveway should be. However, if he did that, next year, he could come to this, he doesn't even have to come to this board. He could decide to split his lot. He has ample space to have another lot, 40-foot lot, next to his property, that they could build a house on, and they wouldn't need a variance. And that in and of itself would dictate to you that there is no need for a variance in this case either, because, as I've explained, rather than a house, he could put a garage. He could put a driveway there. He can do a lot that most people cannot do. This house, this problem, he doesn't have a, what can I say? His driveway doesn't fit the requirements of two parking spaces the way it is. However, that was designed by a previous owner of the house. So, again, the need for the variance was created by an owner of that property. He has a parking space in his garage that is ample, and I believe it matches, it fits the requirements. The driveway coming down to the street is narrower than allowed, but he could also ask for a variance to widen that portion of his driveway, which would minimize the need for the variance, which is another standard that must be met, is that the minimum required variance to suit the needs. That would give him his required That would give him his required parking space. He would have two parking spaces per code that would totally meet code at that point, given a variance. Well, again, you have to meet all five standards in order to grant a variance. I personally don't see that any of the standards are met.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Yes.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm Ms. Stenquist. I live right next door to the east side of their property.
Okay, you were here last month, right?
And I was here last month.
Okay.
And I'm not necessarily in favor or opposed. Because I'm next door, it does impact me. And so I just had questions, and I still haven't gotten answers. I called the city. They didn't have any more information. My neighbor didn't. This picture I have, it says tree, but I want to know what tree this is because there's more than one tree. I'm trying to get an idea, how far across the front of the lawn is this driveway going to go? And I can't get a good, when there's no measurements on here, I can't get a good feel for that. So this is one question I have. And I did attempt to get the answer before coming here and was not able to get that answer. So, you know, because there's a boundary tree on the property, is it that tree or is it the tree that's further down that's solely on their property?
So your question for the board is, where is that tree?
Yeah, which I assume that the person asking for the variance might be able to answer that and...
And you haven't asked the neighbor? You haven't asked Mr. Silver?
I asked his wife last night and talked to her a couple of weeks before that and called the city. So I've made three attempts to get it.
Okay. Well, perhaps we can get that answer for you tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not trying to waste anybody's time. I tried to get an answer.
Sure. Okay.
Was this diagram not included with my...
Sir? Sir? I'll give you an opportunity to respond. Did you have anything else you'd like to add? Or just that you had the question of...
Well, the answer to my tree question, so I know, because I want to know how wide across this goes.
How wide it is? Okay.
Yeah. And then the only other thing that I wanted to know is, after speaking with people, in fact, someone on the board, I don't remember who, had mentioned that when you have a circular drive, you have cars turning, so you have headlights shining towards your property.
Okay.
So in light of that, if the board did decide to grant the variance, I'm wondering if there could be a stipulation that they have to maybe plant some bushes along here just to, just, I mean, you know, not asking for some big thick hedge, but maybe some bushes to kind of block this because it does bring their driveway closer to my property and impacting me more. And if what people are saying, that you're going to have these headlights, then the idea of some bushes along the edge of the driveway or along the property line, something to block that, would be helpful to me.
The board does have the ability to impose reasonable conditions upon a variance grant.
Okay. So those were really the only two things that I had. I don't know if he meets the qualifications for variance or not. I'm just saying, if they do, I'd like to know exactly where it's going to be and if they could put some bushes along there.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., one of the board members has a question for you, if you wouldn't mind.
Mr. Silver. Sorry, ma'am. How long have you lived as a neighbor?
I've lived there since 98. They've lived there about a year.
What have you noticed in terms of water issues when it rains immediately?
Well, as is best stated, they have that lower issue, so there's water usually in the spring, so...
I think somebody last week, it might have been Mr. Smith, said something about it being a pond at times, or have they appeared to, I mean, at times, does it look that bad to you, like there's standing water or they could pull a boat across it?
No. I mean, every spring, there's usually some water and then it dries off. I mean, because I don't live, I haven't, like, measured the number of weeks. I wouldn't say it's a pond. I would say it's a low area.
Okay.
That collects water in the spring.
And...
And then it dries up. I mean, you know, I can't tell you how long it stays there. It doesn't bother me at all. It's not, it's not that entire area either. It's, you know, by the fence, it goes level for so many feet, I don't know, 20 feet, and then it goes low, and then it goes up high to the berm by their house. So, again, I don't live there, I don't know how wide it is, but it's not the entire area from their house to my property. It's maybe half of that, if I had to guess.
Okay. And I asked you this question last time, too, and it was kind of putting you on the spot, and you didn't have much time to think about it, but, you know, there has been discussion, and if the alternative is, which I think, from what I'm understanding, Mr. Silver can still do without asking anybody, if you just built a driveway over closer to your house on the east side, what would your preference be between the circular driveway and that?
Well, it depends, you know, how far out the circular driveway is going to go. I think I remember your question, and for me, I'm trying to, you know, as it is, their driveway is far away from my house, which is nice for me, right? And if they're going to be bringing things closer to my house and going to have people visiting and all of this traffic, I would like to keep it as far away from my property as possible. So, to me, the circular driveway seems, without actually having all the measurements and everything, to me, it seems like this would be better than having a double-wide drive running along the side of my property into their backyard. And it seems like they don't want to do that either because they don't want to tear up that part of their property and the extra expense and whatever.
Thanks.
Does that answer?
Yeah. Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
No other questions. Thank you very much.
Great.
Anyone else have any comment? Okay, Barb, I see your, I'm sorry, Ms. Morris, I see your hand going up, but I'd just like to reserve it to one comment, period, per person. Thank you. Okay. I'll bring it back to the, I'll close the public comment now and bring it back to the Any discussion, board members? What is your, Mr. Allen?
Uh, just as a point of reference, I just ticked off the distance shown from the U-shaped driveway or the semicircle driveway, and it's approximately 50 feet from her property line, the easternmost edge.
Okay. All right. And Mr. Silver, if I could, can I ask you to come back up and perhaps address the question about, is the 50-feet estimate from the proposed eastern boundary of the proposed driveway the distance to the east property line? I think that was the question that the neighbor...
Well, you know, obviously, my lot is almost 100 feet across, and it's a pretty close split in half. I'm trying to keep...
We're just wondering how far east it is or how far west it is from the east property line.
Oh.
About 50 feet? Would you agree?
Yeah, probably. I mean, you know, we're trying to make it, you know, equidistant on both sides here, so very symmetrical look.
Thank you.
So it can't be that far.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chair, my math showed it about 40 feet, the outer boundary, about 40 feet from the eastern property line.
I was going to say 45. The house is 55 feet from the east lot line, and the driveway would be 10 feet wide, and he's trying to center it with the house being centered. I'm guessing it would be 10 feet within that 55. And this actually, just as point of clarification, the applicant had originally just admitted this, and I think that's when Ms. Stenquist came to the...
Gotcha.
And then I had called the applicant and said, yeah, we need something a little more descriptive of the whole property. I haven't had any messages with regard to this particular case.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Of course. Any questions from Ms. Nancy? Mr. Currie? Thank you.
Yeah, just in response there, the house is zoned what, R1B?
R1B.
And is the neighbor's house also R1B to the east?
The ones on either side, yes.
So that whole section there is R1B. What's the minimum lot width for a property to build a house in section R1B?
I think it's 80 feet.
So, under no circumstances could this lot be split and a 40-foot lot be developed into another house next to this one in that residential district, correct? Without a variance?
Unless there was a rezoning or something, yeah.
All right.
But it wouldn't be administered.
Under the current... Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Smith.
Listening to applicant's discussion of his alternatives, kind of changed my mind tonight. I now see a practical difficulty with trying to build a driveway and engineer a solution that, you know, could wind up doing more harm than good. Where I come up kind of stuck right now is what's the minimum we could do to help an applicant solve their issue? And I'm, it was odd, Ms. Morris came up and asked about granting a variance for a wider driveway, and that was, I had written that down while applicant was speaking. But is this the point where amongst ourselves, we would talk about options that may or may not be available to the applicant?
Yeah.
One of which would be to allow him to build a driveway pad in front of the house, which is not at all unusual here in the city of Berkeley.
And that would require a variance, correct?
It would require a variance.
It would require a variance. Okay.
And that's just something I want to discuss as an option that could be considered.
Long, long, simple. Mr. Currie, a question from Ms. Nancy there? Yes.
That width of the driveway, we allow that width to, is there any maximum at the curb? What exactly, how does that code work? I know it comes from the sidewalk to the width of the garage. And does it have...
Are you talking about the new one or the one?
Just say a driveway in general.
Okay. Well, it has to exist to the side of a house.
Okay. Which is does.
Yeah. And it can't go in front of the house if it's going to go to the side. Okay. So, for houses with detached garages, the width of the driveway area on an interior lot, the width of the driveway area or parking strip shall not exceed 16 feet between the front building line and the front lot line. So once it gets past that, then you can expand and have some space or whatever.
So in front of the house, it can be 16 feet?
As long as you have room for it. We can't, again, if you only have 10 feet between your side lot line and your house, let's say, you can't go 6 feet in front of your home.
I see.
So it has to exist to the side, but if you have room, you can go as wide as 16 feet between the front lot line and the building line.
The way that's worded, the area in front of the house, between the house and the curb, can't extend in front of the house at all? Is that what that's saying?
It has to exist to the side.
But the driveway does exist to the side already.
It does.
Not 18 feet wide?
Correct. So the driveway they have now is conforming. It's that if he wants to put it in front of the house, that's the part that we wouldn't allow.
Without a variance?
Without a variance, yeah. That's, yes. But that's not something he could do administratively.
Some people build a sidewalk.
I know a sidewalk, but I guess what I'm saying is, when it says, I mean, the driveway does exist on the side of the house just because it's wider and then it allows it to be 16 feet at the front. Is there something in there that says that it can't be in front of the house? Is that...
Yeah, to the side of the house. Yes. It says to the side of the house. It can't, it has to exist to the side of the house, and it's allowed to go up to 16 feet, but it can't go in front of the house.
Okay, yeah. So the westerly driveway width that's between the west side of the house and the west property line, that's a...
A little blurred because the neighbor gave them to the feet.
Yeah. But essentially, it has to continue that width.
Right.
All the way down, and it can't...
It can't exceed it anywhere east.
Right.
Correct. Now, that was something the applicant and I in our email exchange, yes, had looked at. Okay, if he were going to, if he was going to do, he was exploring options for abandoning this and doing one in the middle of the property, basically. And so it could go 16 feet because he has more room, as long as it's to the side of the house, not in front of the house.
So it can go 16 feet on the east side?
Right.
As long as it could be carried back alongside of the house?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Smith.
Just to make sure I understand the whole discussion that just happened, if the applicant was going to build a driveway on the east side of his property, he would be fully permitted to build an 18-foot width?
16.
I'm sorry, 16-feet width, beginning at the eastern boundary of his home, and then anywhere between that and his eastern property line. So if he wanted to build a 16-foot-wide driveway, he could do that anywhere on the east side of his property. And what I'm looking for us to consider is whether or not it would be a lesser evil, which is not in the language of these handbook, but something, if he were able to expand his driveway on the west and have his headlights shine at his own home, would that be a smart variance to grant? It would give him four off-street parking spaces.
So, Mr. Smith, you're almost proposing like a parking pad at the end of the driveway where it already is on the west side of the property?
Yes. In some communities, people have been known to build what they call a walkway up to their house that then becomes a driveway. And here, it may get real, expand that pad. That may be the least destructive option.
So I'm not sure I understand. I'm not sure I understand your...
Oh, okay.
I guess in my opinion, if I could, I want to understand what you're saying, but we need to be careful about...
Okay. Applicant has proposed doing their U-shaped driveway.
Yeah.
What I'm thinking is, if it works for the applicant, to just expand the driveway to the east so he's got, the driveway actually runs up into the house.
Well, he'd need a variance for that, right?
He would need, and what we could do tonight, potentially, is grant a lesser variance than his U-shape and just say, well, we can give you this much, but anything more than that is more than the minimum that we can... The guy's through the hardship, and now the question is, what's the minimum we can do to help resolve that?
I'm a little, I'm not comfortable with being that prescriptive. He's got a pretty clear request in front of us, and I think if we all agree that he meets the standards, or we don't agree that he meets the standards, whatever it might be, we've got something in front of us that I think we should work with, and certainly, if for whatever reason, the variance isn't granted, they do have the ability to come in with something that's reasonably different, a different type of request. And in my mind, I'm thinking a proposal like you're describing is substantially different than what he's proposing today. That's just my opinion.
It is. I want to have that discussion.
Sure, but I think it's a good discussion. Alternatives, yes. Yes?
I would, I want to concur with what you say. I mean, we can, we can help, we can throw out ideas, we can have a discussion, but it's definitely not this board's job to redesign this project, and that's a complete redesign. It's not a modification.
Thank you. Okay. Well, any additional thoughts? Any discussion on our standards? Anyone have any thoughts on whether or not the, some of the standards are met? Few of the standards are met?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Silver.
So I, my thoughts, if anyone's interested in it. I think this is a pretty close case, but I do think the standards are met. You know, I think the easiest one is the first, the first position of property. You know, I've been living in Berkeley nine years, and I don't, I haven't seen many properties like this with that kind of, I mean, first, there's the issue, you know, Brookline's dead ending there, there's Wilkshire Fire Lane, and then there's this east side of the property with, you know, what has been described as a pretty substantial amount of water that builds it there. So I think that's pretty clearly met. I think it's pretty clearly met. The second standard, he certainly didn't do it. I suppose somebody could try to make an argument that the previous owner who was there for many decades said, I wouldn't have built his home, but I don't think that really applies because there's a big difference in grade. I think the third one is harder, but the key phrase for that on me is, will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome? And that sentence, combined with the fact that it's 97.3 versus 100, I think that's unnecessarily burdensome. I think 97 out of 100 people looking at 100 feet wouldn't be able to tell the difference between 100 feet and 97.5. So, I mean, if we're really... So, I mean, if we're really taking that strict approach. I thought what Mr. Smith was just saying was a pretty, made sense, which would pertain to number four, but ultimately, I think that the, I'm not convinced that a circle drive wouldn't be more tasteful and desirable than a large parking pad to ride at the bottom of the property, and that is a substantially different project. So, I think that we can say that the circle drive is a minimum, is the minimum variance necessary. And, I mean, number five is tough. I know we've had citizen commentary saying that they, it will be disruptive, and I'm sensitive to that, and certainly, nobody wants headlights pointing at their house. I think we should, probably could condition something to be bushes or something blocking lights, and I'd certainly also say, you know, hopefully, people will just be neighborly and you can turn on your lights after you roll around a lot of the time. But I think it's a nice-looking piece of property, and from the street, I think with the circle drive, it would still be a nice street for Berkeley. I would vote in favor of that.
Thank you. Additional discussion or comments on this matter? Any of the board members?
Mr. Kirby? Going back to the placement of the house on the property, I'm not quite that old to remember this place, but it's my belief in looking at the history on it that the house itself was built on a much larger lot. The lot next door was sold to the west for that house to be built, and it was sold with a lot line particularly tight to the house, more than likely with the assumption that the rest of the lot could be used for that type of activity. That's why that lot line and the Sidwell to the west is so tight to that side of the house right there. One would expect to use perhaps the rest of the lot for the driveway and the items that might be needed in the future. The garage itself looks like it was original to that lot before that other property was sold. So, to me, it would look like the reasonable thing to do on this particular piece of property would be to put the logical driveway right in the center of the lot, on the east side of the house, and turn into your garage, or have your garage on that, or even attach the garage, if that's what you like. I know it takes the empty space away, you know, the green space that you would have there separating those two, those two properties right there, but that would seem like a normal course of events and a very plausible course of action here as opposed to giving a variance to this property. That further exacerbates the situation. Already, the neighbor's given two feet just so he can squeeze by that side of the house. Wouldn't it be better for him to build under the current code and remove that squeeze by the side of the house and make it a standard home for a lot this size? But that's just my thought on how that property situation went down. So...
Do you have speculation as to how that happened, or do you know?
No, I would, you know, by looking at the situation, I've really looked this one over since last month.
Okay.
And been looking pretty closely at this and when the other house was built and that lot line was sold, so, you know, that would be my logical conclusion on the best way to move forward instead of compounding with this side of the house, again, just over an old garage that could be, you know, there's other ways that we could do this on the front.
Other alternatives exist, is what I hear you saying, that are possibly within the code and might need a variance.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional comments, discussion, board members? Anyone ready to make a vote?
I'll look for approval of variance.
A motion by Mr. Ullar? Do you have a second? Ouch. Hearing none? Motion fails. We have another motion.
I'm going to deny, what do we got here? BA 10-16. I do not believe that it meets the unique circumstances or the physical conditions for the property. I don't believe that the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property permitted purpose or render the conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome for him. I believe that most of that right there is based on cost, and that's not something that our board should be inclined to look into.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Seconds, which is done. Any discussion on the motion? I'm going to, I'm going to vote for the motion, while I do believe this is a close case and I agree with a lot of the things that my colleague, Mr. Ullar, said. I'm not convinced that to achieve what the applicant wants to achieve using the property in a manner that everyone else in the area is allowed to use it, that installing a new driveway, one that runs all the way to the back of the house, I don't think that's unusual for this property or any other property. I see that activity happening all the time. So, I'm, for the reasons stated in the motion, I'm going to vote no on this, or yes on this, I'm sorry. Hey, no further discussion? We have a motion to deny. Ms. Vanson?
An affirmative vote means you're in favor of the denial. McAlpine?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Gazen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ullar?
No.
Allen?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Sir, I'm sorry, you've been denied your variance. I want to thank you for taking the extra time to try to enlighten this board at our next meeting. Appreciate your inputs. Ms. Vanson, could you call the next case, please?
I have number two as application number BA 1116-27799 Woodward LLC regarding 960 972 and 984 Oxford in the east twenty feet of 996 Oxford Lot 306, 307, and 308, and the east twenty feet of Lot 305 of the Larkmore Boulevard subdivision. Parcel IDs 2517431023, 2517431022, 2517431021, and twenty easterly feet of 2517431034. North side of Oxford between Woodward and Stanford is requesting a use variance of Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138, zoning, Article 4, off-street parking loading, Division 1, off-street parking, Section 138, 222, parking lot location, design, and construction. See non-residential uses location. No parking lot shall be permitted as a principal use in a zoning district other than the parking district. The applicant is requesting this variance in order to permit a business parking lot in a single-family residential district.
Thank you, Ms. Vanson. And before we proceed with this case, we'd like to ask that, we're going to have to ask that Mr. Butt's return, and I'd like to pose a question to the board. I guess we have to decide which alternate sits, and I can propose a potential solution. This is the way I've done it with the boards that I staff. In the interest of trying to get each board member or alternate a reasonably comparable time to sit on this board, what I do is if there's a vacancy, we ask the board member who last sat to, or the board member who didn't seat last, the alternate to come up. Well, in this instance, both alternates were called up at the same time for the case we just heard. So, my next fallback is just who was appointed sooner? And the way I do it is, okay, so, who was appointed sooner? Was it you, Mr. Ullar, or Mr. Allen?
I was.
Mr. Ullar? Okay. So, using that example, my suggestion, Mr. Ullar, sit, and the next time, we can call Mr. Allen to be an alternate, and staff can do that for us. Or if one of you gentlemen would just like to not sit? Okay. So, Mr. Allen is offered to leave the days? He'll sit next time? And Mr. Butt's will come back up? So, right now, everybody you see sitting here, we've got one alternate, Mr. Ullar, and he's sitting because one of our regular members, Mr. Evans, isn't able to be here tonight. Everyone else is a regular member. So, with that formality out of the way, do any members of the board have any questions for staff regarding the request? And this is for a use variance, and our standards are different with the use variance than for what's called a dimensional variance. The case we just heard is a dimensional variance for someone asking for more of something or less of something, or put something closer or further away, a use variance. In this case, the underlying zoning of the property in question, the single-family residential, the zoning ordinance specifically allows only certain uses to be conducted in that district. Parking is not one of them. So, if somebody wants to use it for parking, as the applicant has applied for, they've got to demonstrate to this board that they've met the four standards for use variances, and we'll get into that discussion in a little while with the board, but I just want to explain to everybody the difference between this case and the one we heard before.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Smith?
I need to step up and say, I live two blocks a short way and one block the long way from the applicant's business. If that appears to create a conflict, I should probably step away from the table.
Well, let me ask you this, in your mind, do you think you can act in a impartial manner?
Absolutely.
Members of the board, any comment otherwise? Seeing none? I think everybody here is comfortable with you sitting. All right, there's the applicant here.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Tom Kells, I'm the attorney for the petitioner. My address is 31350 Telegraph Road, Suite 201, Bigham Farms, Michigan, 48025. The petitioner is here this evening through his counsel asking for a use variance. The lots that are in subject were referenced by Ms. Vanson earlier, and they are on Oxford Street. They are comprised of the east half of Lot 304, all of Lots 305, 306, and 307. Current zoning is R1B, single-family residential. We are seeking a land use variance under the criteria of unnecessary hardship in order to allow for parking use in a residential district. Now, this matter has been going on in front of the city for the past couple of years. We petitioned the city council for an actual rezoning of these lots. The city council voted to deny the rezoning. Pursuant to Section 138.606, Subparagraph 2 of the Berkeley Code, land use variances are permitted. Seeking a land use variance in this matter because a rezoning was denied by the city council, and Michigan law requires that for you to exhaust your administrative remedies before proceeding to the next level, you have to request a land use variance. And that's what we are doing here this evening. We submitted our application with the reasons why we would request a land use variance. In addition, we submitted a site plan showing the lots as they currently exist, the dimensions, what's on them, and the lots as we proposed to use them for parking. In addition, at the city council level, we had submitted renderings of what the parking lot would look like if the city council had approved the rezoning request. That rendering was part of the record for the rezoning request, and for reference purposes, if I may approach, I do have a copy that I would just like to circulate amongst the board so you can see for yourself visually what this parking lot will look like if the land use variance is granted.
Yes, please.
Now, it's no secret in the city that parking is an issue, especially along the Woodward corridor where there's commercial uses. This is for the Vincetta Garage Restaurant that's located on the east side or west side of Woodward in the city of Berkeley. As the city is well aware, and as I'm sure all you members are well aware, we have struggled with parking issues over there. The site as it exists, and because of the configuration and the layout, does not allow us to have sufficient parking on there to service our business and our customer needs. We currently have parking arrangements with off-site landowners that are costing us a fortune, quite frankly. Those parking arrangements are at the whim of that landowner and can be terminated at any time, thus leaving us severely exposed and in a very risky and precarious situation because we don't have enough parking that we own that will allow us to service our property and our business. In looking at a land use variance, as the chairman indicated, it's a different standard from a dimensional variance. The criteria is whether an unnecessary hardship exists in looking at the request for a land use variance. Now, in this situation, and there's criteria in your materials, in your city materials, that the zoning board appeals looks at in determining whether or not to grant a land use variance. The current property is residential. There are four houses that sit on the lots, separate lots. The houses are vacant and have been vacant since approximately 2014. One of the items to note is that if the land use variance is granted, my client on the Lot 304, which is a lot furthest west, is actually going to construct, next to the parking lot, as you can see on the rendering there, a new house. So, there will be a parking lot constructed with a decorative wall, landscaping, lighting, and west of that, immediately west of that, on that lot will be, is a house that currently exists that will be demolished, and a new house will be constructed before you even get to the existing neighbors that are west of that. So, that obviously is going to improve the neighborhood. The parking lot, as we proposed to construct it, and as shown in the rendering, we feel is aesthetically pleasing. It was engineered to be safe. There's a decorative wall, as I indicated, there's landscaping, and we feel it's a benefit to the neighborhood and not a nuisance. Now, the criteria that the ZBA calls for, that the law calls for, for ZBA to look at, consists of whether or not unique circumstances exist on that parcel. And unique circumstances exist because the current layout and configuration of the Vincetta Parking or Vincetta Restaurant parcel does not permit adequate parking. The way it's configured and the narrowness of the parcel, not just there, but all along your Woodward corridor. And you should note that your master plan has acknowledged that there is a parking issue along the Woodward corridor and that variances and rezonings will be granted or should be granted in order to allow for expansion of commercial uses along Woodward by allowing parking to move into residential areas also. And that's happening. It's happened. The city has granted parking rezonings in the past. The city has granted land use variances for parking use in the past. So, there really is no reason to hold my client to a different standard or to treat him differently than other applicants that have been brought forward before the ZBA and city council and previous rezonings on land use requests. With respect to the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood is something that is looked at also, whether the variance will change the character or not. We propose that it will not be altered. As you can see from the rendering, the parking lot, a butt's actually, an alley to the east, and the Vincetta Business to the east. There'll be a new house constructed to the west, and then there's residential housing west of that also. The parking lot fits into this neighborhood. It's aesthetically pleasing, as I indicated. It's landscaped, there's a decorative wall. It's not uncommon to other areas in the city of Berkeley, especially if you drive up and down Woodward, you drive up or east and west on 12 Mile, you will see that there's commercial on those major roads. Behind the commercial, there's parking, there's brick walls that separate the parking, and there's residential on the back. So, this is very common in the city. It's not unusual, and we feel it's something that should be granted. Another issue that's looked at or an element is whether the need for the parking variance was created by the property owner, which would be my client. Well, it's not the result of anything that my client did. My client went in there to improve the premises, bring a business to the city that actually is well-known around different communities throughout Oakland County and is a destination point for a lot of people who want to come there and dine with their family and are brought to the city of Berkeley for that reason. brought to the city of Berkeley for that reason. So again, the master plan has acknowledged this situation and has acknowledged a deficiency along the Woodward corridor with the need for parking. The rezoning request to allow the parking was denied. We are asking for a land use variance that will allow us to use the parking district or the residential land for parking district. We feel we meet the criteria, and again, it's been done before several times by the city. Rezonings have been granted to allow for parking and residential. This is the area that the master plan has targeted to allow such rezonings and land use variances, and I would ask that the ZBA grant the requested land use variance. And if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Smith?
When the restaurant first opened, it was allowed to open with the understanding that you had agreements with neighboring businesses, Charter 1, which is now Citizens Bank, the Donut Hole, the Medical Building, to allow for adequate parking. And I understand Citizens Bank changed their name or bought out Charter 1 and rescinded that parking use variance. Did they give any reason why they rescinded that parking use variance, or just...
Yes, basically they're...
They're a big company and they don't feel like they have to?
They're in the banking business and they don't want to get involved in renting parking spaces.
Okay, and there was no counter offer or anything that was...
They just flat out didn't want to be involved with it.
Okay.
By allowing the parking, I might add, it'll take cars off the street, we'll now have adequate parking, it'll get rid of the valet, which, you know, obviously has its own set of issues, and there'll be between the Eaton Street parking that we already have, the additional Eaton Street parking that was rezoned to allow for additional parking that we're in the process of submitting site plan approval for, and the proposed four lots on Oxford Street will have enough adequate parking to service the business, and will be in total control of our parking requirements. We won't be at the mercy of some landowner who can charge us whatever they want for us to have to lease their parking spaces. That will mean more money will be available to put into the business, to improve the business, to improve the property, and I think we can all agree that, you know, it's been a successful business and one that the owners would like to keep going in the city.
Now, was there a contract involved, or it was just a gentleman's agreement for the parking use with the neighboring businesses?
There are typically, mostly, there are some written agreements. Donut Cutter, for example, is a handshake deal. North Point Medical allows for 50 spots, but again, those are available only after 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and on weekends. We can't use them for lunch, you know, so there are severe limitations to what we have as far as the off-site parking that we don't own.
But when you opened up, you took that into account when you opened up in order to open up this location?
Well, the location was the destination for my client's choice of business, and then we had to accommodate that business by trying to secure as much parking as we can in the surrounding area.
Good. Yes, thank you.
How many current spaces do you have right now?
So currently, we have 109, but only 67 are available after 4:00 to 5:00 PM. Oxford will have...
I guess I understand the question. I guess my question is, I guess, number one, how many required spaces do you believe you need to have?
Well, we require, my understanding from my clients and from the engineers, is we require at least 82 spots.
So how many do you currently have that, if you have 109, am I doing math wrong?
We currently have, Vincetta has 25.
Okay.
Eaton will have 28 to 30, I believe, Ms. Vance can correct me, after it's constructed.
We'll have to see.
Or 24.
See. And Eaton has 15.
Oxford will have, Donut Cutter has 17.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Smith, yes.
Just to clarify, your 100 and some spaces that you referenced includes the 50 at North Point?
There are 97, and that includes the 50 at North Point.
So there's 50 at North Point.
We have 25 onsite at Vincetta. There are 17 currently on Eaton Street.
Okay.
50 spots, maximum of 50 spots are available at North Point.
Okay.
But again, after 5:00 PM. And the Donut Cutter has a maximum of 17 spots, and again, available after 5:00 PM.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions?
And the Donut Cutter's, I'm sorry, is used primarily for employee parking, so it's not really available for public parking.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just one more question. Are you aware of any training or any education that your client has done to encourage their customers to come after 5:00 PM to use the North Point parking lot or make use of any of the shared, which I guess right now is just the North Point? But are they doing anything to encourage their customers to park at North Point and then walk over the building?
If you know anything about human nature, regardless of where you tell them to park, people are going to try and park closest to the place.
No, sir, the question is, what has your client done?
I couldn't answer that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really don't know.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrington?
Yes. Getting back to the conditions here that we need to meet for this board to approve this request. Number one here, reading your answers, number one, the building or land cannot be reasonably used, only if it's permitted by right or special use current zoning district because, and your response here goes on to talk about another parcel of property and not the parcel of property that is in question that you're asking for a zoning variance. Your answer is, the property was purchased for the use of Vincetta Garage to use for parking. That question, I think, is specifically geared toward the properties that you're asking for a variance on. Is there any reason that you could imagine that they couldn't be used for their current thing besides talking about another property?
Well, see, what you've got to look at is, this is a use variance being brought to exhaust our administrative remedies, okay? So the criteria is the unnecessary hardship. The property was purchased for parking use. It sits vacant today, okay? We know that if you grant the variance for parking use, that it can be used for parking and will be used for parking. So that's where he said with respect to that.
If I could, I have a follow-up then. So what's precluding the properties that you're asking the variance for to continue to be used for single-family residential?
The intention is to use it for parking. That's what it was purchased for.
So, okay.
The feasibility study wasn't done to look at whether it can be used for what it's currently zoned for. We know it can be used for parking, there's a demand for it, and that's what it was purchased for, and that's what the request is for.
Thank you.
Yep.
So if it was not purchased to be used for parking, can we assume that there's a reason why houses cannot be built there?
Well, it all depends.
But you have no evidence that show that someone couldn't come in and build houses with a parking lot?
Well, I can tell you, for what we paid for the property, or what my client paid for the property, it would probably be cost prohibitive at this point to build a house and sell it at a price point that is necessary to recoup the investment.
But the property was purchased, your client knew that they were purchasing a residential piece of property?
Yes, they did.
With the intention of getting it rezoned for parking, knowing full well that it was a house, a residential piece of property?
Sure, land is purchased all the time to change zoning.
Any additional questions from members of the board? Okay, here, none. Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see you have a seat, and, well, for the public hearing, and my first question would be is, is there a, I see your hand, thank you, is there a representative, I understand there's been an active neighborhood group, and I get the sense from the 12 written comments, the petition signed by 32 people, and as I understand, this information was actually submitted to the planning commission as part of their rezoning process. If there's someone who's representing the group, I'd like to ask if that person would like to speak, and perhaps we can get a number of, everyone's collective or many people's collective comments into the record right off. Is there someone here? Sir?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I'll move on to anyone else who's not in the group, just to keep the meeting going.
Hi, my name's Robert Robinette. I live in 1020 Oxford. It would be kitty corner to the fourth house in. Right? I don't have a prepared statement or anything like that, but, you know what, wrote advertisements, watching the Vincetta Garage for three or four years, there has not been a sandwich board, A-frame, anything on their website, anything on their, in their hospital, or hospital, anything in the restaurant, anything on their Facebook page that points to their other parking. I have to disagree about the parking at the bank. That agreement, if you watch the old meetings, that was terminated before the buyout, before they became the new bank. And actually, that agreement was canceled for a year before they brought it, or we brought it to the attention of the city that they were out of compliance with that.
You know, the four things, just real quick, and I want to save everyone's time.
The houses absolutely can be used for single-family houses. They're only abandoned because they've left them abandoned.
The two, the unique circumstances, shared parking, there's shared parking agreements all over the city. They were only given the right to open up their business because they had, they had to get shared parking agreements. Because they let them lapse, whether it was the bank, or maybe themselves, or whatever, that went behind, closed, is hardship, I don't think it's a hardship, right? Their business is not suffering, there's parking. The proposed use to alter the character of the neighborhood, you're tearing down three two-story houses and one single-story houses, and you're going to replace it with a parking lot and maybe a four-foot wall, right? That opens up the whole neighborhood to Woodward, the noise, it opens up to the back of the restaurant where their little kitchen that they built. The kitchen that they built, they had rezoned to get rid of parking to build the kitchen, right? So it opens up the sounds, the smells, the lights are an addition, right? You don't want to have someone turning around and shining their car, you don't want to have these big lights shining in your house, right? Especially now when it gets dark at 4:30. The, before, the property owners, again, they bought the property, they knew they had certain parking onsite, they chose to get rid of parking onsite to build more building space. They were given Eaton in April and have done nothing with it the entire summer, prime building months. Yeah, it's ongoing procedure, it's ongoing and ongoing and ongoing, and that's all I got. I don't know if you have questions for us.
I do have a question. You indicated that you represented a group, or can I explain to the board how that works? Who you represent, or...
Yeah, so usually it's my wife, she can't be here tonight, is our chosen spokesperson, she's more eloquent. Everyone on the Eaton, or on the Oxford block, from Stanford to, I have the petition of everyone that's on there, we have 100% participation. Everyone on that partition is opposed to have this...
Is that the one that the planning commission received and the 32 signatures that we received in our package?
Yes, yep.
Okay, what's your last name again?
Robinette.
Okay, all right.
1021 Oxford.
Okay, all right, and we did get a communication staff did, city staff did, from Tara Hayes at 1021 Oxford.
That's her.
She had requested that be placed in our agenda so the board could be aware. I guess what I'd like to do, since he's indicating he represents a group, and everyone will have the opportunity to speak individually if you'd like, but could I get a show of hands for everyone who concurs with, okay, we're going to get a count there. If you just raise your hand high. Mrs. Morris, are you, you're raising your hand? Your hand's up, right?
I'm sorry, are you asking for people who live in, who he particularly is representing from that petition?
You know, it can be either or. The reason why I did that is rather than have this many people come and say the same thing, it sounds like they're pretty organized on the previous. So we have, how many, nine did we see? One, two, eleven? Eleven, it's more now. No one's raising two hands, are they?
I won if I can.
One hand.
Can we?
Okay, thank you. Keep in mind, some of our neighbors aren't here. Sure, and then we've received a significant public count. Okay.
How many did you count, Mr. Chair?
I counted 10, plus the applicant. Yep, and that's okay. Very good, sir.
Oh, I got 11, plus...
I thought I hit 12.
Please say between 10 and 15 people. That's fine, okay. We're all here and everybody knows you're all here, okay. More than 10. Okay, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to speak? I did, she did raise her hand earlier, please.
Hi, Rachel Pisantini. I live on Oxford, yes, a couple blocks from Vincetta Garage. But my question is, I'm actually very concerned, Mr. Smith, did you not sit on the planning commission that voted no for the approval of Vincetta Garage rezoning? So I think we have a conflict of interest with you still sitting on the ZBA tonight for this case.
Mr. Chairman, I did check with the city attorney regarding that, and our city attorney advised that this was not an appeal of a planning commission decision, this was a use variance, and so Mr. Smith was allowed to sit down.
But I think it's important that the rest of the audience, everyone should have been told that, because to me, I'm sorry, that's a concern. Now, I also live on Oxford. I drive down Oxford all the time to Woodward, and I realize half the people here are against that, but I'll tell you what, when I have to navigate down Oxford and the whole street is filled with cars as close you get to Woodward, it's very hard. And I truly don't understand why you guys don't want a parking lot to get the cars off the street, because if I lived closer to Woodward and I want friends over, they have no place to park, because all the patrons who don't want to valet park, we're eating their gonna park, they're gonna park in the street. So wouldn't you rather have them in a parking lot? But that does concern me, that's a vote.
Thank you. Oh, sir, you, and then in the front row here.
Okay, I have a prepared statement, and then I'm going to have to improvise a little.
No problem. Your name and where do you live?
Oh, John Delong. I live at 959 Oxford. I live right across from the four vacant lots. I oppose the granting of any variance for the Car Bar, also known as Vincetta Garage Restaurant, which would rezon the four properties on the north side of Oxford Road, namely 960, 972, 94, and 996, from residential to parking. Earlier this year, when I and some of my neighbors met with the Car Bar's attorney, he assured us that a parking lot on Oxford Road would have no impact on our property values. This made no sense to me at the time. As my lawyer, my financial advisor, my home appraiser, and my real estate contacts all assured me that a parking lot across the street from my house would indeed harm my property values. Moreover, just being opposite to four abandoned and dilapidated houses is also damaging to property values. My wife and I will soon be moving from Berkeley, and we now have confirmation of the harm done to our property values. We interviewed five real estate agents before selecting the one we wanted to work with. All five agents told us the same thing, that the abandoned houses are going to make it more difficult to sell our house, and that we will be getting less for it as a result. And furthermore, they said if the four lots were developed into a parking lot, our difficulties would only increase, and our values would decrease further. This also, I assume, applies for my neighbor's properties. Investors in the Car Bar own several restaurants. The Berkeley Car Bar, despite the parking problems that they created, has been a success to its owners, not an unnecessary hardship, they're making money. However, for most of the residents on Oxford Road, our homes are not only our greatest investment, for some of us, it's our only investment. Solving the Car Bar's parking issues by damaging our property values is... Solving the Car Bar's parking issues by damaging our property values is unfair to the residents of Oxford Road. We purchased our homes, indeed, we invested in Berkeley, knowing that the neighborhood was zoned a single-family residential. Many of us would not have moved to Oxford Road if we'd known that this pleasant residential street would be under the threat of parking rezoning. Proposed use of these four lots for parking will alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which I believe is one of the criteria you have to judge on. And it is an unnecessary hardship for us to bear. I'd also like to point out that the parking problem on Oxford has diminished over the last year. We had no trouble parking on the street when we had parties. It isn't the problem it was initially. And I don't know if this is because of the improved valet ordinance the city passed, or for whatever reason, but it would be, would not be prudent to build a parking lot on Oxford Road when the city has already run out of its way to rezone lots for parking on Eaton Road, which the Car Bar hasn't even developed yet. So I urge you to protect the interest of the, my neighbors on Oxford Road, deny the variance of the Car Bar's requested. And I do want to just add, as a rebuttal, that Car Bar caused this problem when they agreed that they would do shared parking. And as my neighbor pointed out, many businesses have shared parking agreements in Berkeley, and they work. They went for almost a year violating the conditions of their agreement without bothering to tell the city that they were in violation. It was only during hearings when we brought it out that they finally fessed up. And also, for years, that property was owned by Vincenta Garage, the mechanical, how-to-repair place, and we never, ever had any problems with the property owner and parking issues. Also, those were very good houses, well-maintained houses, with one exception, a hoarder's house, which we're thrilled that they foolishly bought, because now they are going to have to rip it down. But three of the houses were more than adequate residential facilities. So I guess that concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say this is probably the last time I'll get to speak in Berkeley. It's been a pleasure living here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms.
Hello, good evening. My name is Melanie Stevens, and I'm at 1083 Oxford. So I am just a few houses down from the proposed parking lot.
You're in the same block, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I am, on the opposite side of the street. So I didn't have anything prepared either, but there are a few things that I just think were really important to note. One of them being, uh, the parking spaces that the applicant says that they have today, I just, I don't believe that that's accurate. I mean, it won't be accurate because we know the city has brokered a deal with them in T-Mobile for the lots on Eaton Street to have those developed. Although that has not been developed yet, I think that it would be very haphazard to not take that into consideration when granting additional parking lots, because we already know we're going to have an even bigger one over on Eaton. It doesn't also take into consideration street parking, because a lot of the businesses off Woodward park in the street. I mean, I think it's very natural. Somebody on the board has a, has a business and they park on the street right off of Woodward. So I just think that there, there, there's other parking. The comment about parking on Oxford being very busy and hard to navigate through, one, you have to take into consideration there's only parking on one side of the street because of the restaurant, and two, a lot of us residents park our cars in the street. It's our street. Of course, we're going to park in the street. So most of the time, when you see that congestion from Stanford up to Woodward, those are our cars on the street, because we have one side of the street to park on. And as you know, our driveways aren't that big. We have guests that come into town. It's a way that we have actually manufactured our own, I guess, way of controlling our parking in our neighborhoods, so that when we have guests, we have somewhere to park. The, the business about the, the shared parking, no, it has not been advertised. We, as part of, as a neighborhood, did a parking study, I think it's now been a couple of years, where literally we walked every single day and counted cars, and we have presented that to the city. Repeatedly, those shared lots have not been used. North Point is always empty. And really, the business is busy after five. That's when it really gets busy. I work from home several days a week. The spot in front of my house, there's probably three spots in front of my house, are always empty. Even the lunch crowd, it never gets that busy. So, you know, there, there's a ton of shared parking in that area. And I guess the last thing is, you know, the restaurant really should not have been permitted to open at its capacity because of the lack of parking from the very beginning. Everybody, everybody knew about it. So there's another option here, and that's, let's decrease the capacity of the restaurant. Then we don't have, then we don't have a parking issue. We've got another lot that's, that's going to be coming out Eaton. There's the 40 spaces they have today. There's the shared parking. It's another option, and I don't know that that's even ever been discussed. Shouldn't have been allowed to open to begin with at that capacity, so reduce it. So anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Steve Allen, 2660 Columbia. Just wanted to clear something up. Notice during one of the talks, one of the people said that a couple of parking spaces were eliminated in order to increase the size of the building. Is that, did I hear that incorrectly?
Yes. The, the option before the applicant was, the applicant, when he was first looking at opening, was either to add on to the building proper to have kitchen space, in which case he would have gone to planning commission, or there was an existing garage at the rear of the property that had been used for car storage when it was a mechanic shop, and they asked if they could use that as the kitchen space.
Okay. So it was maybe a little incorrect that they reduced the amount of parking spaces?
Well, if you count the garage as parking, then yes, but the building did not get bigger.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
They added refrigeration over on the west side of the building, and then where they got the dumpsters, and I think they did lose two parking spaces.
I don't remember the parking spaces being lost. I think it was just a greenbelt area.
Just very confused, because I've been told that the footprint of that building never changed. That it sounds like it has.
Did I see someone in the back? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Yes, please.
Hello, I'm Gabrielle Sueda. I live at 1047 Eaton, which I believe is currently the closest occupied home to the restaurant, currently. So I agree, obviously, with all of the comments from my neighbors on Oxford. I think we've already discussed the character of the neighborhood and the issue of losing four homes. The only other thing I would mention is that the aesthetics of the proposed lot on the site plan that has been submitted to the city was presented as, as a fact, as being aesthetically pleasing. I would like to challenge that, having lived across from the 1010 Eaton lot and seen the fate of the pleasing landscaping, which is now dead grass and untended, untrimmed, I don't know what you call them, shrubs, trees. It is not maintained at all, and all of the grass is completely dead. I believe in that site plan, the same very low pressed concrete walls were submitted, whereas brick walls were mentioned tonight. That is not something I've seen on the site plan. We haven't seen any kind of brick walls like Holiday Market, or Berkeley Library, or North Point are presenting, you know, as the boundary between their parking lot and neighborhood. So as far as character of the neighborhood, that's my comment. As far as undue hardship, I would point out that there has been no action on Eaton, and that is after Vincenta strongly committed to the city to submit a site plan as soon as possible after the city pushed through the rezoning, which we opposed at that time also. However, they were granted two additional lots, and no action has been taken that I am aware of that's appeared in any planning commission minutes or agendas. And this just doesn't create the appearance of urgency on the part of the garage to resolve this problem. So I believe it calls into question the undue hardship. I feel that they have done everything in their power to create this hardship for the neighborhood in order to get their way. The, um, they've, they've never, to my knowledge, advertised the off-site parking. Sorry, we already covered that. But I think it is incredibly important. There's a no parking sign still up on 1010 Eaton, which is repeatedly in these meetings represented to the city as customer parking, was asked to be customer parking. They have a no parking sign up there. They have plastic tape. They use it for employees. Valet puts cars there. Customers see a no parking sign, they park on the street. That continues to make people further down say, that restaurant is a pain. Why don't these people want a parking lot? But, you know, they're again creating their own hardship. They haven't, you know, chosen to move to any kind of reservation system that might eliminate or reduce that two- to three-hour wait. We see people circle, park their cars, walk to the restaurant, find out there's a three-hour wait, and walk back to their cars. It's increasing traffic. It's increasing the parking burden on the neighborhood. It's increasing the number of spots that are required. That is a choice that the restaurant has made. Maybe you're cooler if you have a three-hour wait. I'm not sure. But that is the situation. I'm also, I object to this argument that no one will walk from North Point. These are customers that are willing to wait three hours for a hamburger. I don't think walking from North Point would stop them from going to the restaurant. I just, I don't think that it's plausible. People in Ferndale and Royal Oak walk a few blocks between the parking and the restaurant. I go to Royal Oak in Ferndale. I walk a few blocks between where I park my car and I get to the restaurant. North Point is not that far. So yes, as far as the criteria for deciding this, that's the comments I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? See no one? Bring it back to the board. In our packet, we did receive public comments. We received 12 written comments and also petitions signed by 32 residents. Now, these comments were submitted as a planning commission as part of their rezoning application that Vincenta put in, but a representative representing the Oxford block at Larkmore Boulevard Association asked to have those documents in our packet. So I just want to make that clear for the record, that those are in our packet. And with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for any discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Smith.
If I can add a little bit of background, applicant referenced our, our master plan. And yes, we did, as part of the master plan, talk about businesses that had Woodward frontage. Many of them are short of parking. And we talked about rezoning properties that are adjacent to those businesses.
This is the planning commission referring to?
This is at the planning commission levels, part of the city's master plan.
Right.
That there would be some depth off of Woodward that would have parking. And I was on the planning commission at the time we did that. And the vision that I had, and I think I can speak for other members of planning commission, is that it would be a planned, for lack of a better term, incursion, similar to what Westmore Market did, where they picked up properties on multiple blocks, but in a line, so they could build their parking lot back, have the appearance of something that's orderly. When I looked at the applicant's plan, it, to me, it's equivalent of knocking out a front tooth and replacing with a block of wood. It doesn't have any sense of cohesion or continuity that we'd be looking for. Other examples of the expanded parking, there's the real estate, or not real estate, the architectural office, which is currently closed at Coolidge at Harvard. They expanded and they went back, but they did it in a planned fashion, not by picking up three properties along Harvard and changing them to parking. So we did, we did talk about depth, but we also talked about continuity and doing things in such a way that doesn't hurt the character of neighborhood. As far as the parking problem itself, it's kind of ironic that success as a business creates, creates a problem. And applicant has a, has a, you know, quite a popular business. And so when we look at our criteria and say, is this a self-created problem? The actual answer is yes, because the applicant is successful, they created a problem, but yet, to me, that's, that's the wrong answer. We shouldn't be punishing people for being successful. But at the same time, we need to balance what's in our plan, what's the needs of the neighbors, and how things fit in the overall context of the community.
Thank you. Any additional comments from any other?
I'd just like to add, as Ms. Stevens mentioned in her public comments, I own a business on Woodward. That business is very close to Dugan's Bar. And not only do my employees perk on the street, not in the neighborhood, but they perk on the street, but we used to have a shared parking arrangement, which was a handshake, but a shared parking arrangement with Dugan's, that when we closed at seven, they could perk after seven in our, in our lot. And they also bought a business next to them and bought two houses behind them to provide adequate parking. And when we changed our hours at, at my business to, to nine o'clock, we just told Dugan's, you can't park here until nine o'clock. And it worked for a time. Only time it doesn't work is during cruise and, and St. Patrick's Day. But for the most part, it works. And we both have very successful businesses.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Smith.
By "it works," you referencing shared parking?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just wanted to add that.
Sure. Part of our discussion. There you go. Chair, Mr. Kirby, yes?
I'm looking at the, the answers here to our questions from the applicant yet again. You know, we, we have to meet these criteria here in order to entertain a passage of this there. I don't see the answers on here. Every one of them talks about the bar and that property. Absolutely none of these answers have anything to do with the properties in question here for the variance. I do not see an answer that's acceptable at any one of these lines, right on down the line.
Any one of the criteria?
Yes. In the applicant's own words here, they bought the properties for the specific use of putting in the parking. So is that not by his very definition negates the need for the variance is not the result of the property owner? He bought the property to change it. That is directly the result of the property owner. I don't understand how any question, after listening to that, could be construed otherwise. The changing the essential character of the neighborhood, I think that goes without saying. Those cars will all be parking straight into those other pieces of property right there. That's a residential neighborhood right there. So the, you know, commercial parking that butts residential throughout the city does not answer the, how does that not change the essential character of the, of the neighborhood? So doesn't answer it that way. The need for the variance due to the unique circumstances or physical condition, apparently just the, being adjoined to the Woodward corridor is, is the answer to this question. I don't see any unique circumstances or physical conditions other than the Woodward-based business would like more parking, which again, goes back to the variance as a result of the property owner's actions. The number one, that the land cannot be reasonably used for, for the uses permitted by right. It has been used for houses this long. I see nothing there that, that would tell me that it cannot be currently used for housing still. So I do not find a plausible answer for any of these conditions to be met.
Thank you. Ms. McElhanlon.
Uh, Ms., I don't know if there's any more comments from the board, but I yield to you to make a motion, or if not, I'm prepared to do so.
Okay.
to make a motion, or if not, I'm prepared to do so. I would like to make a motion that we deny the application PBA 1116 based upon the fact that the argument presented by petitioner does not meet the criteria in which we have to have to change the existing houses to a parking lot or to parking spaces as outlined by petitioner.
You have a motion, we have a second. Motion and second. Any comments or discussion?
I have one, a couple comments. Now, I give the petitioner credit for putting the parcels together, coming over the design, specific renderings, I think the renderings are tasteful. I do agree that there's going to be parking adjacent to residential, there's no question about it, and to have a, a business that's wildly successful, in a lot of ways it's good, but in some ways, depending on the situation, it might not be as good, and that's sometimes the price of success that communities can pay. The difficulty I'm having with the request, though, is, is one of our standards that the building or land, in this instance, the lots that are being asked to be rezoned, cannot reasonably be used for any of the uses permitted by right. In my mind, I haven't seen or heard anything tonight that would lead me to believe that those parcels could not continue to be reasonably used for single-family residential. So, for those reasons, I'm, I'm going to vote yes on the variance to deny. Our zoning ordinance does require that for a use variance, we actually need two-thirds of the vote, so we actually need five members here tonight to vote in the affirmative for a motion to pass. Normally, it's four for the dimensional variances.
Any additional comments? Ms. Vanson, could you call the vote?
So, a yes means you're in favor of the denial. Butts?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gazen?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
So, the variance request is denied? We do appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time.
You spent with us tonight.
Thank you.
I'm going to wait just a couple minutes while everyone is welcome to hear our next case or stay for public comments. There's a number of people who'd like to leave, go and take the opportunity now, and then we'll call the next case. Thank you everybody for your time. Thank you for your patience and your service. You too. Ms. Vanson, could you call the next case?
Application, application number B H 1216, Alamo Building and Development, regarding the parcel west of 2380 Franklin, north side of Franklin between Berkeley and New York, just requesting variance to construct two new houses on two 40-foot wide parcels. Each new house would be 24 feet wide, the houses should be at least 15 feet from the houses at 2412 and 2366 Franklin. The new houses would be 12.9 feet from each other when a minimum, when a minimum of 15 feet is required. Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138, Doning, Article 5, District Regulation, Section 138, 527. Notes to Schedule of Regulation, Subsection D, there shall be a distance of at least 15 feet between dwellings.
Thank you. Any members of the board have any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Smith.
I have two questions for staff. First question is with regard to the two lots. Now, I don't go back to when the house that's on the two lots was, was built, but those were two lots that were initially platted as 40 quarters, that were then later combined by the property owner, and then subsequently split?
They've been subsequently split. I'd have to go back to the plat to see, and I don't have a plat with me, to see how they were platted, but they, they were under one ownership, and it was an 80-foot wide parcel.
Yes.
So, it had one single tax ID number. Recently, the property owner did request a parcel division, which he can do, because he can build a house previous to 2009. Houses couldn't be, they, they had to be at least 23 and a half feet wide. Now, they don't have to be, so the lot split was permitted, and what the applicant is before you to see if he can build something that is wider than what he would be permitted to do otherwise.
Yes, yes, I'm familiar with that part. I was just trying to get back to in the days when Berkeley was invented.
Platted, yeah.
If they had planted those out as two 40-foot lots with the intention that they would eventually be developed into single-family homes, and I just wanted to go back to the, really, the creation of dirt. The other question, I forgot, but it'll come back to me.
If I may, I mean, there are two separate lots, lot 119 and 118.
Yes, but they, they had been combined.
Yeah.
And then they're two, and I want to make it clear that we had two 40-foot lots.
Yes.
That were subsequently combined and then split.
Right.
And my thought is that when it was all plotted out, somebody made a 40-foot lot because they thought there was going to be houses on both lots, and they did not designate one of those lots as parkland or some kind of green space or a nature preserve.
Correct. It was all planted the same, yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you. And the other one, if I think of it all.
Any other questions? Okay. The applicant here tonight, or so, please.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Brian Alamo, Alamo Building and Development, here to, to see if we can grant variance on two, for me to construct two brand-new construction homes. The hardship or the unique circumstances that I can see in this particular case is that there's a switch of the driveways on that particular street where, where it doesn't allow the 15-foot variance in between the homes. So, what I was able to do is, I was able to shrink the homes. Usually, in a 40-foot lot, you can construct as big as 25 feet, if, if your neighboring houses are, are, you know, enough of a, of a clear span, I guess. I was able to, you know, to shrink it down to 24, in, in order, in order for me to, to still have the 15 feet with the neighboring homes, but it still is not enough for me to have the 15 in between the two new construction homes that I'm trying to build. I don't think it's gonna, it's gonna impact the neighborhood since there's plenty of other new construction homes that are being developed and currently constructed. It's, it's something that neither me or the previous homeowners created, because again, I'm going back to, to the switch of the driveway where typically in the neighborhood, that driveway would be only on one side, left or the right, and, and that kind of gives you, gives you the clearance in, in between the homes to be, to be the same. In this particular case, the neighbor to, to the west, if I'm not mistaken, their driveway is on the right, and, I'm sorry, on the left. And then the neighbor to the west, their driveway was on the right. So, I'm, I'm kind of getting sandwiched in, in between, which, which creates this particular problem. I think, I think that's it.
Okay.
If you guys have any questions?
Sure. Any members of the board have any questions for the applicant?
I, I think one of the things, I'm sorry, one of the things that we had last time is that there was a, some confusion with the plan, that there was a, there was a bump out that, that eliminated as well and made the house just a strictly 24 feet with, with no cantilevers to, to either side. So, it's just a strictly 24 footer going down the center.
Yes, and you've provided us elevation plans as well as site plans?
Correct, correct. So, what you see is exactly, exactly what's getting, you know, what's probably proposing, I guess.
Very good. Mr. Smith, did you have a question?
Yes, just one quick question.
Sure.
If I did the math right, on those lots, if you built homes that were maybe 23 feet four inches wide, you'd be able to get your 15 feet in between the structures. What issues does building a house that narrow on a lot that's that shallow create?
One of the issues that, that I believe the architects usually, usually is, is challenged with, I guess, is, is the layout of the, of the hallway and the bedrooms upstairs with the closets, where, you know, where, where the, the room becomes just too small, and, and same thing, where, where you enter the house, again, there's only so deep you can go on those, on those, you know, floor plans as well, because you, you know, those, those lots are only, I believe, 114 and 115, with a detached garage, I think you can only go, you know, 40, 40, 40 foot, I believe 42 feet deep. It, it becomes almost, almost, you know, impossible to lay out a, you know, a practical layout that, that would be marketable and, you know, and interested to people to, you know, to, to live in, I guess.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have a seat, and I'll now open up the public hearing portion of the comment. Would anyone like to speak? Yes.
Rachel Pisantini, here again. So, what I'm about to say, and I will turn over my speech, too, and I would like it to be made part of your, part of the public record, as part of your minutes when I'm completed, and I will give you a copy of it. So, my perception is that the members of the zoning board of appeals do not feel that the opinions and concerns brought forth regarding variance requests from residents that live outside the 300 feet mean anything. I may be wrong on this, I'm just telling you what I see as the perception from the board. I do live outside the 300 feet from where this builder's variance request is, but just because I'm not within the magical 300-foot circle does not mean my concerns and my comments should be dismissed or ignored. I'm first and foremost a Berkeley resident, and the last I checked, the Berkeley resident sat at the top of the organizational chart with the planning commission, city council, and ZBA reporting to the residents. So, with that said, I hope and pray that you take my comments seriously, just like any other Berkeley resident. The builder requesting this variance went before the zoning board of appeals in October, requesting a variance to build a large home on a piece of property that they bought on Franklin between Berkeley and Coolidge, which is 40 feet wide. The property for this variance request was for parcel west of 2380 Franklin, and the builder was requesting to build 12.1 feet away from the neighboring house, which was at 2380 Franklin, when the code says that the builders must be at least 15 feet from other dwellings. At the October meeting, as you guys all recall, it was discussed that allowing this variance would place the new build too close to 2380 Franklin, and there was no hardship shown, and so the variance was denied. During the meeting, the ZBA members talked about the fact that they didn't like the idea of allowing a new home to encroach upon a neighboring house, and it was described that most often, the zoning board of appeals, when they've granted these types of variances for larger homes, it has been for two new homes to be close to each other rather than encroaching upon neighboring houses that are already there. The builder then asked at this meeting if it would make a difference if he just bought the house at 2380 Franklin. The chair, Mr. Evans, said that you guys couldn't comment on that because that was not something in front of you at that time. So, here we are, because evidently the builder has bought the property at 2380 Franklin, which again, is another 40-foot lot. The builder's now requesting to build two large homes on a 40-foot lot. The variance request is asking for the zoning board of appeals to allow him to build these two new homes 12.9 feet from each other when code says it must be 15. In order to grant a variance, the petitioner needs to demonstrate a practical difficulty. Purchasing two lots, knowing full well, you must have a variance in order to build houses of a certain size on these 40-foot lots is not a difficulty. This is a self-created hardship and nothing more. There are five standards that all must be met, I know you guys know about them, we'll talk about them shortly. But as you review this case, I think there's some important points that need to be remembered. And I've sat through these meetings and hear quite a lot about past practices and looking back to see how the zoning board of appeals ruled on other cases. I think it's important to point out that the ZBA, that your actions never set a precedent. ZBA decisions legally do not set precedent, and therefore, looking back on past cases should not happen. Each case must be considered on its own merits, each case must only be compared to the five standards and not to past practice, according to the Zoning Enabling Act. If the builder wants to build one large house using both lots, that would solve his problem of wanting a large house, there would be no need for a variance, that is an option. Or, the builder has another choice. He can modify his plans some more, build two smaller homes, whether or not the smaller home would sell is not a concern of the zoning board of appeals. The fact is, building two small homes is an option for him. I'm also 100% certain that smaller homes would sell just fine in Berkeley, we've never had a problem selling smaller homes in Berkeley. The fact that the builder does not feel that his profit margin will be large enough if he builds a smaller home is once again, not a concern of the zoning board of appeals. Granting variances like this has become commonplace, when in fact, granting variances should be exceedingly rare, and the five standards must be applied as part of your decision-making. Back to the five standards. The five standards that the zoning board of appeals must work by are not random. Yes, they are included in our code, and they are in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, because these are the standards that have been tested and upheld in the Michigan appellate court. All Michigan cases, all circuit courts measure their decisions on these five standards.
Excuse me if I could?
Because the Supreme Court?
Ms.?
Yes?
Could you focus your comments on this particular property?
I'm trying, but you're interrupting me, and can I get back to it?
Well, I just request respectfully that you do that, continue.
This all has to do with how you guys rule, so it does pertain to the case, so I would appreciate if you'd let me continue. All Michigan cases and all circuit courts measure their decision on the five standards because the Supreme Court of Michigan has made them the measuring stick for all cases. So, getting back to the case. Standard one, the need for a variance is due to a unique circumstance or physical condition of the property. Negative. The builder made the decision to buy two 40-foot lots, there's no unique circumstance there. The builder did not have to buy these properties. Unique would refer to the characteristics of the physical property and the dimensional aspects. A 40-foot lot is a normal size in Berkeley, there is nothing unique about it. Standard two, the need for a variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or the previous property owners. The builder does not meet the standard either. The builder brought the property and decided he wants to build two homes on these lots that are outside of our zoning codes. This is a self-created hardship. The builder has options for building homes within our, without violating our zoning ordinances or variance. Standard three, strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for the permitted purpose, or will render conformity with these regulations unnecessarily burdensome. The builder did not meet the standard with these two lots. These two lots are not unbuildable. The builder can choose to build one large home or two small homes, he has options. Four, the request for a variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. The builder does not meet the standard, the builder can still build, the minimum variance necessary is no variance. Number five, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. There are significant safety concerns with allowing homes to be closer than 15 feet. As we all know, three homes burned in Berkeley on July 4th. Let's not forget this. In my opinion, the builder does not meet the standard either. The variance request of this builder does not meet any of the five standards as required, and therefore, should be denied. This is a self-created hardship, nothing more, and it does not qualify to be approved.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ms. Morris, I know you had your hand up earlier, please.
Thank you. I agree with pretty much everything she said. And I, and I do oppose granting this variance. I'd like, again, to refer you to the zoning board of appeals handbook. They're, they give an example, before I do that, can I ask a question?
Well, you can ask a question, but I'd like your comments to pertain not to our understanding of the criteria or handbooks or Supreme case, but how your comments should pertain closely to the request at hand. And so, I'd ask that you and anyone else speaking, there will be a And so I'd ask that you and anyone else speaking, there will be a time later in the meeting that anyone can speak on general zoning topics or topics related to the board's criteria or state enabling law or any of that later on, but I'd like, for the purposes, we have an applicant here, we may have other people speaking, we're charged here tonight to act on this case, I'd like, if at all possible, that members of the public, please be respectful and just keep your comments focused on whether or not this variance should be granted.
Okay, my comments directly relate to this case, but I do have a question.
You can ask.
Okay, I'm not sure that I understood what Mr. Smith was talking about in terms of the lots. It's my understanding from the materials that were provided that this lot, this was a combined lot, and then the owner of the property took action to split it. Am I wrong on that?
We can address that after public comment, see if we can get a clarification on your question. So your question is?
Was the lot split?
Okay. We'll see if we can get an answer for you tonight.
Maybe I should refine my question. Was it split, or is it going to be split? I just, I'm not, I didn't hear him specifically what he said, so I want to clarify.
Okay, well perhaps maybe we can allow Mr. Smith to answer.
Thank you.
When the public comment is up. That would be the appropriate time to address any questions by the public, so...
I'm sorry, you mean after I'm done, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, well then I will go ahead with my reference, because I don't know if that's what he said or not. In the zoning board, zoning board of appeals handbook, there is an example that they cite regarding the specific conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. In other words, it's not self-created. And as an example, they cite a lot split as being a specific example of a self-created situation. So if in fact, this lot was split by an owner, then it is an example of self-created situation, and therefore it should be denied, because all five tests need to be met. But that's the main point.
Okay.
That's my main point that I wanted to make.
All right.
Also, I want to just remind everybody that it's the applicant's burden to prove that he meets all five of the tests.
Yes, we're aware of that, thank you.
And I don't see that he did that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, Mr. Hennan?
Thank you, my name is Dennis Hennan, I live on Earlmont Road, approximately directly north of this parcel.
Did you get a postcard?
Excuse me?
Did you get a postcard?
But outside of the notification area.
That's okay, I'm just trying to get an idea about how, okay, thank you.
So, I'm here to speak in opposition to the application. So, in October, the staff recommendation stated that two 23.5-foot wide houses could be built on the two parcels without a variance being requested. But now, two months later, we have a recommendation that two 24-foot wide houses be allowed. I believe the reasoning given in the recommendations by staff is faulty, and I want to address some of that. So, the staff recommendation suggests the long-term utility of a 23.5 and a 23.9-foot wide house is diminished compared to a 24-foot house. I believe Mr. Kirby, in a past meeting, said he has an approximately 23-foot wide house, and I think him and others that live in similar-sized 23-foot wide houses might take issue with the line of reasoning of the future usefulness of their homes. The staff further recommended that a 24-foot wide house is contextual, while narrower houses are not. What is not contextual are two big box houses, two feet closer than normal, surrounded by small bungalows. So I'm not trying to argue that this is a reason that no house should be built, but simply that the contextual argument doesn't fit here and isn't reasonable support for the variance. At one point in Berkeley's history, I believe that 23.5 feet was the minimum width necessary for a house. So it wasn't 24 feet, it was 23.5 feet. Then the planning commission lifted the restriction so that narrower houses could be built to help with infill development. Thus, it seems it was the intent of the planning commission to allow narrower homes. So in the article you got in your packets tonight from the APA, that property owners have certain rights to enjoy the use of property within the limits of the ordinance, but the function of the ZBA is to uphold the provisions of the ordinance, and it's not to allow someone to find a way around the ordinance to avoid an inconvenience. So I believe the request before you tonight is merely for the convenience of the applicant. The applicant, right now, can enjoy the full rights of the use of the property without a variance, and that there's no hardship unless you must vote no. I'd also like to urge to the applicant that this is a, a double lot is a real gem in Berkeley. We moved to Berkeley and built our home here because we were able to build on a double lot, have an attached garage. If that opportunity may not, wouldn't have surfaced, we may not have come to Berkeley. I know real estate prices are at premium now, and...
Could you address those, please, sir?
Yes, sorry. And it may be something that he could consider that would, you know, he may be able to command a premium and build still without using a variance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this? Mr. Allen?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions.
How far, what's your address, where are you at?
2660 Columbia.
Columbia, got it, thank you.
When this first appeared before this body in October, the property owner of record in the application was Alvers LLC, that was in October 2016. This month, it's listed as Metro Developers, both carrying the same address. Can anyone explain that to me? Seems a little odd. And I'm wondering, when the question was asked in October, "Well, what if I just bought that piece of property, then what could I do?" I think he might have owned it at that point.
Do you know? Do you know, or are you just saying?
I said, "I think." He may have owned it at that point. The other thing I found odd was in the recommendations, the board has discussed current economics of land in Berkeley. While financial circumstances cannot be considered realistic, economics should be. That's the same thing. So, please, don't consider it financial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this? I see no other requests to speak. Just to confirm, have board members, Amy, did we receive any written correspondence regarding this?
No, we did not.
Okay, all right. All right, I'll now close the public hearing, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Motion.
He can go ahead.
Okay. All right, Mr. Kirk.
We seem to be getting a lot of these here for the last few years, I think we need to get down to the root of the situation, and I, looking at the information we have here provided, and some of this question could be from Mr. Smith, but in '97, it talks about the earlier case, when the houses were allowed to be built at 23.5. Since that time, our planning commission, I believe in 2008, if I'm correct, relieved that stipulation.
The city council did.
City council, okay, yeah.
City council changed the laws, yeah.
Right. So the council changed that to allow smaller houses to be built for that infill. I guess my question is, if that is not the intent of our city and our zoning ordinance to allow the smaller houses to be built, why has the ordinance not been changed if that is the direct intent of 2008, I guess is what I'm getting at? We've allowed quite a few of these in the past, and I agree that our past decisions have no bearing on today's decision. I guess for me, as a planning, as a zoning board member, my question would be to the council, if it would be, or the planning commission that puts forth the recommendations to the council, is if we relaxed that number in 2008, why is it that we don't follow that ordinance and we hand out variances? Why don't we just change the ordinance, if that's the case, to no longer allow things if they're not contextual or they just can't sell? I don't understand why that variance still stands here eight years later after we've been through, or not variance, but the ordinance.
The ordinance that would allow narrower houses?
Yes, yep.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think that the ordinance was changed by council with the idea, because the board was seeing a number of lot splits at that point, that's what was happening at that point. And the idea was, because there's always this balancing act of if the board is getting a lot of variances and approving them, then maybe the law needs to be changed. So the idea was, let's change that ordinance and allow for, not have the 23.5-foot wide house, allow for a narrower house. What ended up happening is developers that build houses started going through what FHA requirements were and so forth to the size of a bedroom, and how the treads have changed on stairs, and how that ends up making you don't have the narrow stairs that you used to in older homes, things are just wider because the building codes have changed. And so that kind of squeezed into that idea of a narrower house. Now, in some communities, they do have narrower houses, and that's not something that we've seen in Berkeley, I know it is in other cities like Hazel Park, they have narrower houses that, and they adhere to, you know, whatever their setbacks are. That's something that the board has looked at, the width of houses, and seen if it's contextual, and if the driveways are, again, it's those middle properties, right, where it's not alternating anymore, that we see a lot, that the board's seen a lot of these. I think that there had been a lot of them, and the planning commission was in the midst of looking at some changes, and it, you know, ended up, you know, going the way stuff did this summer with regard to changes in setbacks, and that was something that was wrapped up with all of that form-based code. So I don't think that anything is moving forward at this point, I don't know what the planning commission's plans are come the start of 2017, once the master plan amendment is, once we have the comments from that, and they have their public hearing, and I'm assuming they'll move forward to the adoption that Mr. Smith had put forth, or the amendment he had put forth. But I don't know what the planning commission's plans are for looking at strictly the single-family residential districts and seeing if some of those ideas that were put forth as part of the whole package could be cherry-picked out. I don't know what their plans are at this point. If that helps you with the history at all?
It does, so with the lot split, just this exact scenario is why that code was put forth by the planning commission and eventually adopted by the city council for this exact scenario here with the lot split.
Because the board was seeing lots of lot splits, and so let's change it to make it easier to do infill development, but what ended up happening is the developers ended up saying, "It won't work, I can't get a three-bedroom house on a lot, this shall," I mean, these are all the things that, you know, that they were saying, and that's why they came before the board.
Seth?
With that in mind, you know, I've been on the board for 10 years, and I'm not sure exactly the amount of these type of activities, variances that have come before us, but it seems to me that it's substantial. And this was changed in 2008 with the intent for this exact situation, and here we are eight years later, and it's the same, and it just continues month after month after month. What I'm finding is that I feel like I'm usurping the power of the city council. They voted specifically for this exact item, and for us to hand out variances directly in the face of that ordinance, time and time again, seems like it's improper, looking back upon it. And I have voted for variances, I vote on the individual merits. However, looking at the change in 2008, and it directly correlates to this exact situation, that is why the council votes, to amend the ordinance or change the ordinance, and that's the ordinance that we have today. Even if we were to go back before 2008, it talks of a 23.5, which would work perfectly in this circumstance, and the council still made, took steps to change that.
Well, I think they took steps not to necessarily allow narrower houses, but to avoid the burden that the board was having with regard to lot splits. I don't think their intent was to build an 18-foot wide house in the city, I think the intent was, they saw a burden before the zoning board of appeals with regard to lot splits, and that this would perhaps provide some relief if you had the 15 feet between dwellings, and you could build something narrower, if that helps.
Mr. Chair? I'm sorry, you called first.
Yeah, there was, even, I've only been here since February, and it seems like I'm seeing a lot of these. And also in regards to the ordinance, I like the idea of 15 feet in between houses. I think that's there for a reason. Number one, you have the fire issue, which we saw from the case back in January, and number two, there's the sound issue and the noise issue of having houses that close to each other, and at night, in the morning, I mean, even with 15 feet, I can hear my neighbors arguing, I can hear people, there's a reason why that 15 feet is there. And I don't see, I don't see a reason to go beyond that. If city council or planning were to change the ordinance, then my hands would be tied, but I like the idea of that 15 feet for the fire issue, for the sound issue, there's a reason why that 15 feet is there.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Okay, just, I think I can cover a bunch of these things, they're kind of a half-hazard order. One, in my time on the planning commission, also on the zoning board of appeals, quite often what shows up here at the ZBA drives discussion at the planning commission. And the number of variance applications has declined, as we got better with our ordinances. Specifically for the narrow house issue, what we found was that, as Amy had described, there's issues with hallways and stairways. Mr. Kirby has referenced, his home is narrow, but I'll bet you your hallways are not compliant with today's code.
It's the closets.
Yes.
Where you get built.
Mm-hmm. So, unless you have a very deep lot, we can't build, or a builder cannot build a compliant home. We also have a minimum size, I believe a home has to be at least 1,400 square feet, something in that area. The idea was way back when, to make sure there would be no ranch houses built on 40-foot lots.
Give me one second, Mr. Smith.
Yep.
There is a minimum, but...
So what I'm getting to is we have a series of unintended consequences that come from writing clear regulations.
1,300.
1,500?
1,300 with the basement, 1,500 without.
Okay, so, and you cannot build a 1,500-foot, single-story home on a 40-foot lot, with your lot coverage and a garage and whatnot. What's that?
Yes, with the setbacks and so on.
Yes. But today, as I was looking through this one, I, some things that have been troubling me for, not maybe as long as Mr. Kirby, but a while, really crystallized. When the original ordinance were written, the intent was to make sure that there was no house wider than 25 feet, built on a 40-foot lot. And the 15-foot separation between homes, I can't find any reference in fire code or anything else that says it's dangerous to build homes less than 15 feet apart. I see in other cities, 10 feet, 8 feet, so there's, somewhere public safety has a recommendation, but I'll bet you it's not 15 feet.
It's 5 feet off of the lot line.
Yes. So, what I plan to do at the next planning commission meeting is flow something that says, what we really want in the city of Berkeley is, we don't want a house that's more than 25 feet wide, we want a minimum of a 5-foot setback. We want a minimum of a five-foot setback. So what, this whole crystal clear thing says, hey, a house is not more than twenty-five feet wide, your setback is not less than five feet, so you can split it up however you want. But this fifteen-foot separation between homes, I think was written to make things easy and it was done assuming that all driveways would be on the same side of the house along the block. As soon as you have a place where the driveway switch, strict application of our ordinance makes a lot unbuildable. And I don't believe that's the intention of anybody that wrote these rules. It certainly isn't my intention. So when I look at this application, I see a guy that says, okay, I want to respect the property owners on either side, we'll give them a fifteen-foot separation. I want to build a home that meets FHA and different requirements on a relatively shallow lot. So as we're going along here, we have this thing that says the house has to be fifteen feet apart. I'm not sure that's a real requirement other than something done to make it real easy so everything looks good. So that's just part of discussion there is, we've created a situation by writing these simplified regulations that if, you know, some attorney was doing it, we'd say, well, you want to have a minimum five-foot setback, except in instances where the driveways change and then we can look at something different. It, it just, you create lunacy. And what we wind up doing is actually perverting the attentions of the people that laid out the city. Because they laid out these forty-foot lots and I bet you their vision was that there would be a house on every single lot. And now for us to, to get to a point where we say, oh, well, you need to build a house that can't be financed, that creates an undue hardship for anybody.
I don't think we're hearing that.
Well, I, we had, I think it was John Oliver came in, we had a, a session with some of the builders and they talked about to get financing for a home, you have minimum room sizes, you have things you can do, but once you get a lot that's relatively shallow, you're squeezed. Your stairways, you can't have a straight-up stairway anymore, it has to have a landing and those take up a lot of space.
No, I meant was we haven't heard that about this case today.
Oh, we haven't heard that about this case.
Right.
But what I'm, I'm looking at here is, I, I think the guy has some unique circumstances. He's got forty-foot lots that are contiguous and other than placement of driveways, he, they would have fully buildable lots. What makes this even more unique, if there's such a thing as more unique, is he has green space directly across the street. So the thought that any neighbor looking on these properties would see something that's out of place just isn't going to happen. The need for the variance wasn't caused by the applicant. The applicant didn't do the lot split. The applicant bought two properties and he bought them one at a time.
I do, if I could, I think, can we clarify when this lot split, I think your report said the lot split was earlier this year?
Yes.
So I'm not sure what you mean by...
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If you look at the site plan.
Yeah.
You have the lot numbers.
Right.
And to the east, it's 117 and to the north, it's 120.
Right.
So that makes these to 118 and 119.
Right.
Which is two lots.
Yeah.
Okay. So they had to be like that on the original site plan.
I think the, the original plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think that was the case, okay.
They were combined for property tax purposes.
Okay, I understand what you're saying now.
There's one parcel ID, there's been two lots.
Yeah, one parcel ID that was recently split into two parcel IDs, but I think it's a reasonable presumption. I think what you're saying is that the original plant borders now match what we have here today.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's back to being two forty-foot lots, which were originally intended to contain single-family houses.
I need to clarify that in my mind, you're referring to, okay, got it.
Yeah, okay, I, I sometimes jump ahead.
That's okay.
I can't see an adverse impact on the neighbors, you know, jumping ahead to condition number five. But number four, my understanding is that on a shallow lot, a twenty-four-foot house, twenty-four-foot wide house is about the minimum you can reasonably do and have your room sizes, have your closets, have your compliant stairways. So what we have here is something where strict application of the ordinance does create a hardship. And we need to update the ordinances in, in this case. This, for me, this just crystallized it. We've seen a number of these come up and it's like bang, I know what the problem is. We wanted the houses to be five feet off the lot line, we didn't want one to be wider than twenty-five feet. The fifteen-foot just became math. Is, is that accurate, Amy? I mean, not, not the, what I just said, but in terms of fire separation, it's a minimum ten feet between buildings.
It actually just says five feet off of a lot line?
Yes.
With the presumption that everything would be built that way, but...
Other than a garage to a house, fire code says ten feet, correct?
Unless with a garage, in Berkeley, you can build closer if you do, if you do a firewall and that would be the same for a house that's closer than five feet off the lot line, which we, was discussed with regard to the firehouse this, from July, yeah.
Yeah, and that was even something I noted on applicant's application. He's got his garages three feet off the lot line. Because the lots are so shallow, I would encourage him to consider, assuming that he gets his variance, to put in a firewall, move the garages closer to the sidelines or the lot lines and add a little utility to the garages.
Mr. Chair, a question. Yes, Mr. Chair. And maybe I should have picked up on this one, but is there, is there a minimum currently in place, Amy? Like with of a house?
No.
Okay. I, I guess what I'm not understanding or isn't clear to me is, is it really unbuildable at twenty-three and a half? I mean, I didn't hear him say that. I don't know whether you could finance that or not. I mean, you probably know more about it than me, but nobody has said it's unbuildable at twenty-three-five, I don't think. So wouldn't it really be possible here at twenty-three-five? I mean, it, it might not be ideal, maybe the closet space would be a little small or it wouldn't be everything he might want it to be, but that's not the same thing as impossible.
There are minimums for closet space, room size, to something to be counted as a bedroom. I think it has to be at least like nine feet by ten feet. There's a, the master bedroom of my house is smaller than the minimum bedroom size available under today's building code.
I agree.
And when you add all these things up and you've got the wider stairways and compliant hallways that have to be like three feet, four inches or some odd thing wide, it creates a situation where if you have a house that is narrow and short, you don't meet the minimums. So you wind up saying, oh, I can only build a two-bedroom house.
But, but do we know that here, that, that six inches is going to make that difference?
For a, no, I just, this is the, what we call common knowledge.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Mr. Kirk?
So you were saying that your room is, is below, were you able to get financing on your house with that small room?
I paid cash.
Would you imagine that you could sell that to somebody who could get financing on that?
There's, if you're FHA, there, there's some of the financing is a little much stricter, but I could have gone to my bank and gotten a loan for the house.
I, I deal with a fair amount of houses being in the building industry and, and I've not heard of somebody being denied financing for something that's under twenty-four feet.
For new construction?
Yes. If you were to look at whatever, new construction, old construction, there's, there's no, there's no change as far as financing goes. If you were to look...
Changing homes.
Yeah, no, but there's no change as far as the financing goes. Somebody can get a loan on this house or that house, there's no hardship that you won't be able to sell it or somebody can't finance it. By, by building these new homes so close together, it starts to give our neighborhoods the look of, you know, say Hamtronic where these homes are tall and they're just stuck close and close together. When we talk about the forty-foot lot putting, being made back in, let's say, 1930, I don't know if their, their single-family theory was the twenty-five-hundred-square-foot double-story house on that forty-foot lot, you know, when we say, let's go back and look at that. In those days when they were splitting these up, I would imagine that a twenty-four-hundred square-foot two-story house is a, would be a multi-family type of house. If you look at every house built back in those days in these type of neighborhoods, that's what they were looking at right there. I don't know if they were looking at these giant houses that are, are next to each other, standing tall with small, narrow gaps between them as far as the neighborhood goes when they were doing the forty-foot sit-rolls. I agree, they were made for mul, for a single family and I do see the issue with the driveways being back and forth. But I guess it comes down to, I personally believe that the, that the code has to change, the ordinance has to change. We've seen a lot of these here and a lot of them over the last few years, easily within the last five, easily within the last five. So in five years, we've not moved on anything pertaining to the setbacks and, and I understand what you're saying, the intent was there not to build over twenty-five feet. Well, how come the wording wasn't not to build over twenty-five foot, which you certainly may build under twenty-three-five? If that was not the intent, and the intent was only about the larger size, is where my concern is at. The code was specifically changed to accommodate this exact situation right here by the city council. It was recommended by the planning commission and then approved by the city council with the multiple hearings that they have to have and the multiple readings. And that's what was improved eight years ago. And nothing, no recommendations from the planning commission, nothing by the city council has done anything to change that, other than us continually changing that ordinance by our, by our actions on this board. And it starts to look like we're becoming legislative in, in our manner at which we're doing this, as opposed to taking each case, case by case, all of them's just a couple of inches, that's all. This one's a few feet, you could switch the house on the other side, gain a few more inches and cut it down to say fourteen feet on one side and you'd be a little closer for a minimum variance, but it still violates that, an issue that we've been, we've been having a lot of for a long time. I think we need to, I think we need to, as a board, perhaps push this back to the planning commission and, and ask them to move on this. I know in the past, we've talked about that as a board. I know, you know, maybe a lot of you guys weren't here or not, but I, I know we've discussed that in the past, boy, maybe we need to send this back and ask if they can do something or what is the actual intention here? But if you look at the ordinance and the move by the city council there to change that in a way, that looks to be their intent. It really does. And, and I know we don't want nothing bigger, but I don't know of any proof where a house can't be sold. And if that's certainly the case, why haven't we acted on that in eight years if that's actually a fact? That's, that's almost as disturbing as, you know, changing these constantly. If that is indeed a fact where you can't get a mortgage for a house, how has our laws existed for the last eight years with that actually being a fact? I don't know if that is a fact. I've, I've heard some people maybe mention or say it, but I didn't get, I didn't have a problem getting a mortgage on my twenty-three-foot house. I, I could sell it tomorrow and I wouldn't imagine that there'd be an issue getting a mortgage on it. And I rebuilt the whole thing in 2002 and was still able to get a mortgage on it with current laws, you know? So I have some small rooms like you're talking about, but I can still get the mortgage and I still met the bulk of code in 2002. So it's just my thought that maybe, you know, we need to, we need to send this back here and have some, have the, the ordinance is changed or something.
Saying send it back, you mean maybe make some kind of collective recommendation to the city commission to say, look, we've seen a lot of variances like this, it's a repeating thing and we think that issue needs to be examined more closely.
Do we know how many perhaps this year, just, just in the calendar here?
I'd be happy to let you know next month, but I do not know what's happening.
And I don't remember either.
I would say almost every meeting.
And I would be confident that if, if the city were to take on our recommendation, if, if we were to do something like that, that, that might be a question that comes up. How often does this happen and what are the circumstances involved? How similar are they? Can we, is there a way to, to, to address this without it coming up?
Just to be fair to the applicant here, over on Oakshire, we split a lot, right? And the builder just do something on Oakshire south of Cattelpa, two forty-foot lots, seemed to be able to build two houses that sold just fine and didn't come before us whatsoever. So something there, whether it's the three inches that this house is too close on this side or what, how is one guy able to do this and then, then we can't have this happen here, I guess is some of my questions.
Well, and I think that's why we're here tonight as a board. Did you, I thought I saw you raise, but...
Yeah, I did, I just, are you done?
Yeah.
I, I guess my biggest struggle with this particular case is brought before us is that the applicant knew exactly what he was buying. He knew the size of the lot he was buying and the size of the second lot that he bought or had or, I, I guess at this point, it really doesn't matter. So my biggest struggle is there's no unique circumstance to the property. And unless someone can come back and tell me that we cannot build a house that's, what did we say, twenty-three and a half feet or twenty-three point six inches and not get it financed and approved, I guess I don't understand why we have to continue to use that rationale as a, as a reason to approve these zoning requests.
Gotcha. Okay. Does anyone else have any comments or discussion? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Smith?
I move that we approve application number PVA 1216. Unique circumstance, the applicant has two forty-foot lots that are contiguous and other than placement of driveways and buildings on neighboring properties would be fully buildable lots. In addition, there's a green space directly across the street that is unique for this situation. The need for the variance was not created by the applicant. The previous owner was the one who did the lot split, the applicant bought the properties one at a time. Strict compliance with the ordinance would either render one of the lots unbuildable or require the builder to require, construct a narrow home that would be inconsistent with neighboring properties, ultimately hurting the community. Our goal here is to support the city of Berkeley. Construction of two twenty-four-foot houses is, my understanding, minimum variance that is fair to both the applicant and the neighboring properties. The proposal here is to build buildings that are fifteen foot separated from additional homes, more than ten foot separated. So this applicant has actually exceeded the fifteen feet of setback that we, we asked. Now, he's doing sixteen feet on each property. So the applicant is, is building a smaller house that would otherwise be permissible if you didn't have the driveways changing sides.
I think, I think he's doing fifteen on one side and sixteen and a half on the other. You're talking about from the neighbor's houses, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But he's also, by, by constructing a twenty-four-foot wide house, he has a total side setback of sixteen feet instead of the fifteen feet that we would require were it not for the driveways changing sides.
Gotcha.
And I see absolutely no adverse impact on neighbors, especially since directly across the street is green space. There are no single-family homes that would be looking across the street at these properties.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second? I support. Support? Any further discussion?
I'm going to support the motion. I, we've heard a lot of comments tonight, a lot of thoughts, not only from the board members, but members of the public. I think everybody's doing a very constructive view of the same thing from a different angle, kind of like someone standing on the equator and someone on the North Pole. You see the moon, but you see it from a different angle. I think, I've heard a lot of valid points tonight, not only from the board members but the public. Can I get to you?
Yeah.
I believe for the reasons the motion maker made, this property is ripe for variance. We've got houses of this dimension on this size lots throughout the city being built that don't need a variance, some even a little larger, very similar circumstances. And I think in my mind, the ultimate unique circumstance is, is what has happened historically with the houses on lot 117 and 120. I think those factors, out of control, or not, not in any control if anyone doesn't own the property, do have an impact on the property. I don't think that a twelve-foot-nine, you know, two-point-one feet between the proposed houses is unreasonable. We do have situations like that that, in Berkeley now, historically... We do have situations like that in Berkeley now, historically. And for the reasons, those reasons and the reasons the motion maker suggested, I'm going to vote yes for the variant. Mr. Kirby.
Mr. Kirby. Oh, sorry, I have one comment.
Sorry, Mr. Buds, yes.
I have one comment, in fact. Unlike the other cases tonight, we have not had anybody, any of the neighbors show up disputing this case.
Neighbor, okay.
We've had no comments from either neighbor.
And residents don't matter. Gotcha.
I have a comment, I guess.
Yes, Mr. Ullar.
My journal says this, is I, you know, I think building and development is a good thing, but these just don't look right. And it's not just green space across the street. I mean, people driving up and down the street are going to be seeing this too. Unless I'm nuts, I think there were the first time, I mean, it is a different, it's a different, it's a different case, but there were certainly citizen comments or people the first time who were commenting on the street or the block, saying that they didn't like houses of this size coming in there. And, but most importantly, it just, it hasn't been established that you couldn't do it otherwise. It hasn't. I mean, people know more about building than me, and they're saying it's tough, but it doesn't sound, and he didn't even say that. So I don't see how that criteria can be met if you can't do it the other way. So I'm going to keep going.
Okay, I have just a couple of quick comments. The real...
Mr. Kirby. Real quick here, it is not the minimum variance, in my opinion, to move forward with this request. We could switch the driveway to the other side, move the 7.1 to what would be the east side, and create ourselves a 14-foot setback, 14-foot 6 setback right there, away from that, as opposed to the 12.9. There's some other ways to get a minimum variance, other than what he's proposed here. And, you know, I still see it as a result of the property owner, this is a full lot, and, you know, I don't see unique circumstance here, unless opposed to other properties. I believe that it certainly wouldn't unreasonably prevent him from using the property for its permitted purpose, which is single-family. You could build single-family there easily, smaller. Thank you.
All right, any additional? Anyone else want to comment on that? Okay.
I'm late at the time, nope.
Say no more. Ms. Vance.
Buds?
Yes.
Euler?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
McAlpine?
No.
Kirby?
No.
Gesund?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Sir, you've received your variance?
No.
No.
No, we did not receive it, and you do need to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we deny the application PVA 1216, based on the criteria, based on the fact that the criteria that must be met in the five points has not been demonstrated by the petitioner.
Support. Any discussion? Ms. Vance.
Buds?
Uh, no.
Sorry, so a yes and a no, sorry. McAlpine?
Yes, to deny.
Kirby?
Yes.
Excuse me. Gesund?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Euler?
Yes.
And Evans?
No.
Oshington and I, Harris.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time, sir. Next item on our agenda is other business. Any members of the board or staff of any other business hearing tonight?
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy holidays and... Wasn't me, or...
Thank you.
The same, happy holidays to everybody, and I appreciate everybody serving.
All right.
Could we, I don't know how this should be handled, but could we request that if we have a meeting in January, that we add a discussion item regarding recommendations to the planning commission on some issues that we've had brought to work?
We do have a meeting in January, so yes, we can add that to the...
Everybody okay with that?
And can you also just obviously bring information about the number of requests we've had, basically?
I just didn't have it in my pocket.
No, no, that's the, just, and I think it deserves a further discussion and preparation.
Is there any way that we could...
That's... How many requests we've had, or is that difficult? Oh, great, that'd be awesome.
Perfect, thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Smith.
Amy, there were two common variance applications. One was for building height, because people didn't want to do the 412 roof that most of Berkeley used to be. And so we changed the height the way buildings are measured.
I think they were okay with the 412. I think what happened is the building got bigger, so it got flatter.
Yes. Right, and then, but people wanted the architecturally attractive roofs, and so building height changed.
Yes.
And then, but I think we're looking at the setbacks, you know, that particular variance, as opposed to building heights.
That's what I'm hearing, yes, that's what I...
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because early on, it seemed like every variance application was for height, and then later on, they become because of adjacent properties.
Yes.
And most of the applications that we've listened to have been because there's something on an existing structure, an adjacent property, that causes the property under application to have issues. It typically isn't on the property, you know, the builder is trying to build something that would be otherwise compliant, were it not for neighboring properties.
I will get that information through January.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, next item is the ASAM report. Mr. Kirby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank all of you that attended the December 9 meeting. I thought it was good. We were there from 9:55 as council, and then the zoning board and planning commission joined us later on in the afternoon. I thought that Mercy did a great job, and was helpful, and there were residents there, and I think it was, it was an inspiring meeting. I can't thank you guys enough. For three hours, you guys sat here, you too, Mr. Allen, and, you know, the words, the knowledge, the thoughts that, you know, came out of you tonight, it shows how much you care, how much you know about this, and I know on behalf of the city, we're very appreciative of all the work that you guys do up here, and don't ever forget that, please. Council meeting is December 19th, and that includes administration. Thank you, Amy. And I just want to wish everyone a very happy and safe holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comments? Has anyone, members of the public would like to speak?
So I forgot, and I'd like to turn over this to, I think it was Amy.
Sure, yes, those are your comments from, yeah, yeah, please.
And a couple of things. You guys were talking about, and maybe I misunderstood you, but you guys were trying to say that you can't get, or there's rules with FHA sized houses. There is no rules. I have it right here. There's absolutely no rules for FHA houses. The only rule that they have, there's only one exception to the minimum square footage under FHA. It does require all manufactured homes to be a minimum of 400 square feet to qualify for FHA financing. So you're looking at 400 square feet. That's it. So I think it's really important to point out to you guys. And also, you talked about financing, I can tell you that I bought my house FHA, so very, very recently, and I bought another house FHA, and I got MISTDA approved. Do you guys know what MISTDA is? Yeah, MISTDA steps in and helps, you know, low-income people, the first home-time buyers, this was years ago, and they still do it. They provide up to $7,000 right now, it used to be $5,000, it's $7,000 towards closing costs and down payment, and the person buying the house only has to come up with 1% down. So I don't think that that's accurate, what you're saying, Mr. Smith. Also, you know, I absolutely appreciate every one of you guys, and that you listened to us, but I do have a concern in that, Mr. Evans, I get the impression that you don't like me very much, but I am not your enemy, please know that. I'm just looking out for the best interest of the residents and Berkeley. I'm a Berkeley resident first and foremost, and I am not here to be your enemy. I'm just here to make sure the codes are followed, that's all I'm here for. Thank you.
Does anyone else would like to speak? Thank you for your comments. We did receive, Berkeley Citizens United did submit some comments for our packet. I just want to thank the group, Daniel, Dennis, I'm sorry, I'll get it right, and for submitting those in advance. I think it's very helpful that the board can see that in advance. I appreciate it. And being that there's no more public comments, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for attending.